Good morning, Kern County, and friends and family from around the world. Good morning, welcome. You all were just way too loud right now, so we've got to stop all that. This meeting is called to order. Welcome to Kern County. It is officially showtime, Kathy. Would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Parlay.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here. Thank you. We will move now to our flag salute. I would ask that you all please stand and remain standing at the end of our flag salute for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Our salute this morning will be led by our vice chair, David Couch.
(Inaudible) the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so I have some rather lengthy information to convey to you. I apologize in advance. It is a red script, but it is critical, and we will get moving to our presentations here very soon. But it's important information I need to share with you. For those in attendance and are interested, Spanish translation services are available for today's hearing. Before we get started, I would ask that Ms. Rodriguez come forward to the microphone to make an announcement regarding how people can take advantage of that service. In addition, translation devices work best when they are in close proximity to the translator. So we would ask that, if possible, the side of the chambers located to my left be reserved to the extent possible for those requiring translation. Note that those in the lobby area will not be able to use the devices, and I ask that anyone requiring translation of the proceeding, please come into the chambers. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you.
I'm going to give a brief message in Spanish, if I may have your permission. Muy buenos dias a todos. Bienvenidos a esta reunión. A través de la reunión del día de hoy vamos a tener interpretación simultánea ocurriendo. Si tenemos equipo de interpretación en la mesa de atrás, favor de hacer su camino hacia la mesa de atrás y podemos proveer interpretación a través de la reunión. Va a haber el momento de comentario público. Cuando haga su comentario público, sepa que estaremos aquí para apoyarle. Van a tomar asiento. Usted va a dar su comentario completo y después nosotros interpretaremos. And a quick reminder for everyone else, if we do have Spanish participants here, slow down a little bit. Just make sure we are not purple and we'll be good to go.
Thank you very much. We are now moving to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Clearly, there is a lot of interest in this topic, and this is an incredible historical moment in Kern County. So before we get started, I want to provide an overview regarding how the meeting will proceed today. First, we're going to get a staff presentation, followed by an opportunity for board members to ask questions of staff. After the staff presentation, our first speakers will be the applicant representatives, WISPA, Western States Petroleum Association, SIPA, California Independent Petroleum Association, Chevron, CRC, California Resources Corporation, and Berry Corporation. Once those comments have concluded, we will take public testimony of all persons who are in opposition or who have concerns regarding the proposed project. As you can see, the front row has been reserved for people wanting to provide comments today. For those interested in providing comments, we would ask, please, that you make this space, use the space that is available, make your way down to the first row when it is your turn. We request that you state and spell your full name for the record. Speakers will be limited. We ask you, please, keep your comments to two minutes. We know that's not a perfect marker, but we ask that you operate in good faith in that regard, please. And if you're having your comments translated, I assure you, you will get your full two minutes to provide your comments in your preferred language. After the board has heard from all the commentators in opposition or who have concerns, we will take next comments from those that are in support of the project. Again, speakers will be limited to two minutes again, and if you are having your comments translated, you will get your two minutes fully, I promise you. Once all comments have been received, we will close the public hearing and ask staff whether they would like to respond to any of the public comments or provide necessary clarification for the board. The board will then begin our discussion and take action regarding the proposed project. With that, I want to thank you so much for being here today, your interest in this matter, all of you that have contributed to making Kern County what it is in the world and to our families here. Thank you for being here. We appreciate your support, your passion. We know that opinions are divergent, and ultimately, we're going to come away with policy that is good for all of us. That is our hope, and that is why we're here. With that, I ask Director Oviet to begin her staff presentation on item number one.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, I am Lore Li Oviet, the Director of Kern County Planning and Natural Resources. I'm here today with Craig Murphy, my Assistant Director, and the Oil and Gas Staff Team. I'd like to note that Jennifer Hernandez of Holland and Knight is here of counsel to the county at the
From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good morning, Kern County! And friends and family from around the world, good morning, welcome. You all were just way too loud right now, so we've got to stop all that. This meeting is called to order. Welcome to Kern County. It is officially showtime, Kathy. Would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Parlier.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here, thank you. We will move now to our flag salute. I would ask that you all please stand and remain standing at the end of our flag salute for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Our salute this morning will be led by our Vice Chair, David Couch. Thank you. Okay, so I have some rather lengthy information to convey to you. I apologize in advance, it is a red script, but it is critical, and we will get moving to our presentations here very soon, but it's important information I need to share with you. For those in attendance and are interested, Spanish translation services are available for today's hearing. Before we get started, I would ask that Ms. Rodriguez come forward to the microphone to make an announcement regarding how people can take advantage of that service. In addition, translation devices work best when they are in close proximity to the translator. So we would ask that, if possible, the side of the chambers located to my left be reserved to the extent possible for those requiring translation. Note that those in the lobby area will not be able to use the devices, and I ask that anyone requiring translation of the proceeding, please come into the chambers. Thank you, good morning.
Good morning, thank you. I'm going to give a brief message in Spanish, if I may have your permission. Muy buenos dias a todos, bienvenidos a esta reunión. A través de la reunión del dia de hoy vamos a tener interpretación simultanea ocurriendo. Si tenemos equipo de interpretación en la mesa de atrás, favor de hacer su camino hacia la mesa de atrás y podemos proveer interpretación a través de la reunión. Va a haber el momento de comentario público, cuando haga su comentario público, sepa que estaremos aquí para apoyarle. Van a tomar asiento, usted va a dar su comentario completo y después nosotros interpretaremos. And a quick reminder for everyone else, if we do have Spanish participants here, slow down a little bit, just make sure we are not purple and we'll be good to go.
Okay, thank you very much. We are now moving to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Clearly, there is a lot of interest in this topic, and this is an incredible historical moment in Kern County. So before we get started, I want to provide an overview regarding how the meeting will proceed today. First, we're going to get a staff presentation, followed by an opportunity for board members to ask questions of staff. After the staff presentation, our first speakers will be the applicant's representatives: WISPA, Western States Petroleum Association; SIPA, California Independent Petroleum Association; Chevron; CRC, California Resources Corporation; and Berry Corporation. Once those comments have concluded, we will take public testimony of all persons who are in opposition or who have concerns regarding the proposed project. As you can see, the front row has been reserved for people wanting to provide comments today. For those interested in providing comments, we would ask, please, that you make this space, use the space that is available, make your way down to the first row when it is your turn. We request that you state and spell your full name for the record. Speakers will be limited, we ask you, please, keep your comments to two minutes, we know that's not a perfect marker, but we ask that you operate in good faith in that regard, please. And if you're having your comments translated, I assure you, you will get your full two minutes to provide your comments in your preferred language. After the board has heard from all the commentators in opposition or who have concerns, we will take next comments from those that are in support of the project. Again, speakers will be limited to two minutes again, and if you are having your comments translated, you will get your two minutes fully, I promise you. Once all comments have been received, we will close the public hearing and ask staff whether they would like to respond to any of the public comments or provide necessary clarification for the board. The board will then begin our discussion and take action regarding the proposed project. With that, I want to thank you so much for being here today, your interest in this matter, all of you that have contributed to making Kern County what it is in the world and to our families here. Thank you for being here, we appreciate your support, your passion, we know that opinions are divergent, and ultimately, we're going to come away with policy that is good for all of us. That is our hope, and that is why we're here. With that, I ask Director Oviet to begin her staff presentation on item number one.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. I am Lorely Oviet, the Director of Kern County Planning and Natural Resources. I'm here today with Craig Murphy, my Assistant Director, and the Oil and Gas Staff Team. I'd like to note that Jennifer Hernandez of Holland and Knight is here of counsel to the county at the county council table. The proposed project consists of revisions to Title 19 of the Kern County zoning ordinance with emphasis on Chapter 19.98, Oil and Gas Production Local Permitting, and related sections of the zoning ordinance to reconsider, including updated procedures, implementation standards, development and production activities, and conditions for future oil and gas exploration in unincorporated Kern County. The project requires consideration of environmental impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act, which is shortened to SEQA, with a final second supplemental recirculated environmental impact report, consideration by the Planning Commission for an advisory recommendation to your board, and consideration and final action by the Board of Supervisors. The proposed amendments to the sections of Title 19 of the zoning ordinance are attached as Exhibit A to your staff report. Next slide. This is the third consideration of the ordinance after adoption twice, and court ordered rescission for SEQA deficiencies by, and the Board of Supervisors did take that action twice, to rescind. Staff, however, notes that no deficiencies were found in the zoning ordinance or the ministerial process, and the legal challenge to the ordinance was dismissed by the courts. Next slide. The ordinance before your board today is the same as the ordinance originally adopted by the Board of Supervisors November 9, 2015, with minor amendments implemented to comply with the findings of the final SSR EIR. The current ordinance, which is now in effect since we've rescinded this ordinance, was originally implemented in 1986 and reestablished each time this ordinance was rescinded. Those requirements are detailed on pages five through nine of your staff report. The current ordinance has no required local permit, has minimal development standards, and requires setbacks to comply with current law, and therefore, all permitting comes from the State Agency Calgem, who also becomes the lead agency for SEQA. Next slide. The matter today is to consider readoption of the 2015 Oil and Gas Ordinance with minor modifications, and recommend certification of the final second supplemental recirculated EIR to address three topics that the court mandated we look at: the appropriate use of agricultural easements, to address setbacks from sensitive receptors, and the invalidation of our multi-well health risk assessment, and to analyze impacts on oil drilling use of water supplies in relation to disadvantaged communities. Next slide. As context for your deliberation today and consideration of reestablishing local oil and gas permitting, this slide details the need for more oil and gas production for the entire state of California. While the economic benefits of oil to our local business growth, jobs, and tax revenue is well-known and backed by reports in Exhibit C, 15093, Statement of Overriding Consideration, the needs of the state of California are not always highlighted. So let's review some of these points. While the state is achieving its goals of zero emission vehicles, oil demands in the state remain stable over the last three years and have not declined. Therefore, we are not reducing gasoline demand fast enough to offset the losses from refinery closers and the lack of drilling permits for in-state pipelines. Your board is well aware of Kern County's position in California in providing renewable energy, but the last transmission line was built 15 years ago, that is, the Tehachapi Renewable Transmission Line that ends in Kern County and takes power down to Southern California and then all over California. It was rated for 6,400 megawatts, with upgrades, we've gotten almost 10,000 megawatts, and we are finishing up the last 2,000 megawatts of that, and they have not built a new transmission line in 15 years in California. And the ones that are being projected will not come online till 2040 at the cost of billions of dollars. In 2025, we are expected to have only seven fully operational refineries that produce gasoline and jet fuel for transportation. As you know, two major refineries, Phillips 66 in Los Angeles and Valero in Benicia, are scheduled to close in 2025 and early '26, reducing the state's gasoline production capacity. In addition, San Joaquin Valley pipelines to the LA Basin and other refineries are unable to obtain in-state crude oil. They need to have a certain volume in the pipelines to function. So as a reminder on where our oil comes from, in 2022, California produced only 26% of the crude oil used in its refineries, while the remaining 74% was sourced from outside the state, the majority imported from Ecuador, Saudi Arabia, Iraq, and Colombia. There are specific refineries that are designed only to use San Joaquin Valley crude, and these functioning pipelines are critical for the entire transportation fuel supply network. And as a reminder, this is also critical for aviation fuel. Calgem permitting declined significantly from 1,800 average permits in Kern alone to only 86 new drilling permits statewide in 2024. These permitting delays are directly linked to Calgem's challenges as lead agency and the complexity of SEQA compliance. Next permit. Pages two through four provide the details and tables of past permitting. As a reminder, over the five years of permitting and then intermittent permitting that we've done, a total of 11,570 permits were issued, then went to Calgem for final issuance of their portion of the permitting, and $156 million in mitigation funding was collected and distributed. Pages 11 through 32 provide details of the ordinance, and as a reminder for the public watching this, all of these are on the Kern County website at the Oil and Gas Landing page, including the addendum which has been provided to the board today. Two types of permits are shown on a table from the ordinance on pages 15 through 18. There is an oil and gas conformity review for major things we're doing, such as new drilling, and a minor activity review for other types of permits. Like a building permit, you comply with all the requirements, in this case, the 89 mitigation measures and the development standards, and you get a permit. There is no public hearing, and there is no, if you comply, you get the permit, and then you go to Calgem for the technical underground expertise that Calgem brings to getting a permit. In addition, the Kern County final SSR EIR covers Calgem as lead agency, so there is no more SEQA at Calgem's level if you have an oil and gas conformity review or a minor activity review under this permit. There is a cap on permits every calendar year of 2,697 new wells' oil and gas conformity review. We have never reached that amount, but that is the number that has been used to calculate the cumulative impacts of the projects. Next slide. So in Exhibit A of your ordinance in the staff report, on pages seven through 12, there is a chart, a table, that goes into the ordinance with a checkmark, that explains which ones of these permits you need for various issues. So a new well, a sidetrack, and a rework requires an oil and gas conformity review, but different mitigation apply to each ones of those. So this is a step-by-step on how the permit works. Next slide. And this is the step-by-step on the minor activity review. If you do everything right, you get a permit in seven days. If your first permit that you submit has a correction, we let you know in seven days, and when it comes back and you say, "I corrected," then my staff has three days to review it. And if you still have made mistakes, the ordinance requires a mandatory sit-down meeting. This is a suggestion from the industry, when we started developing this, to short-circuit the back-and-forth that occasionally happens, and many times happens, with Calgem and other departments, where there is either a miscommunication with the engineering staff or the industry staff on what the county is actually wants, or there's a misunderstanding on the part of the county on what's been submitted. This has severely truncated that back-and-forth, and we have processed those over 11,000 permits in one-to-two reviews within the seven-day and the three-day limit. Next slide. The legal background over nine years of litigation are on pages 32 and 33 of the staff report. Details of the processing of the SSR EIR are on pages 34 through 57. So let's talk about the structure. This is all online. Volumes 1, 1A, and 2 is the actual second supplemental recirculated analysis. Volumes 3 through 10 is the 2015 final EIR and all the other actions we've taken. And here is where it's available online. So what you're seeing in the chamber are 74 binders comprising the entire record of the CIR. So what you are certifying today is not just the 2025 portion of this, but you're certifying the entire record of these 74 binders, all the way back to 2015. These are all the studies, all the responses to comments that have been placed in the record. However, as a reminder, after going to court and rescinding this twice, the court only found three items, three topics, that we needed to address. And while the public is free to bring up any topic they want, the court's only directed changes to these three topics that we're going to discuss. So the first topic is agricultural resources. So there are no changes to the previously adopted site limitations on designated farmland. And what this means is, in the West, you can only disturb two acres of prime farmland when you're designing to drill your well. In the Central, it's three acres, in the East, it's 1.2 acres. The ordinance includes boundaries, remembering that this is only in the Central Valley portion of Kern County, it's the only place we have oil, it's 2.8 million acres of distinction. But we have maps that show the West, the Central, and the East. The 2015 EIR had these limitations, and so people have been implementing these limitations. The original mitigation was to pay for one acre to one acre lost for an agricultural easement, and the criteria for designating farmland is prime farmland of statewide importance or unique, that's been actively farmed five out of 10 years, it has a water allocation sufficient for farming, and those are the determinations that we've used in all of our EIRs here in Kern County. And out of the over 11,000 permits issued, 52.35 acres of land was impacted. So the use of agricultural conservation easements for mitigation, after we permitted that, was found invalid by the court, we came to your board and we removed it, and as a replacement, in 2020, 2021, we put the legacy equipment requirement. So on a farmland parcel that meets that qualification, where the new well is being permitted, if it's controlled by the applicants, the new well, you have to remove the same equivalent legacy equipment. So let's say you have an old tank. You have to find an acre of a tanks or pipes you've thrown down, or whatever it is that's a legacy equipment, so that it's a one-to-one. So as you recall, there was a group of farmers who had entered into this litigation, that we sorted this out with them, this legacy equipment, they have put in the record that they are satisfied with this mitigation measure and stepped back from further commenting on the final SSR EIR. So the first mitigation is the legacy equipment, and there is a long list of requirements, remembering that of all the permitting we did, this only affected 52 acres. So we do not expect this to affect that many acres moving forward. We then are modifying mitigation measure 4.24 to require a one acre to one acre, if you only disturb half an acre, then it's half an acre to half an acre, agricultural easement. So we've put it back in. The court directed us to look at it again and change their mind, so we're going to put it back in. The difference is that we are not going to collect a fee, instead, it is incumbent on the applicant to bring an executed agricultural easement. There are many, many providers, such as Sequoia Riverlands Trust, has been engaged in conversations, and the agricultural easement has to be on farmland in Kern County. So this is what we are bringing forward to comply with the court, and the steps to compliance have been provided for in the mitigation monitoring program. In addition, we received a late comment from the law firm of Schut Mahaly &amp; Weinberger, that litigant law firm that I was representing a group of affected farmers that I mentioned, and they proposed minor changes to the legal definition of entities, which staff concurs with, and who can hold and execute, so we've made those changes as well and brought those to your board. Next slide. The issue on air quality was the multi-well, not the single well, but the multi-well analysis on what the setback should be from sensitive receptors. While we were processing the draft second supplemental EIR, SB 1137 went into effect. That requires that new wells be 3,200 feet from sensitive receptors, it creates a health protection zone. Inside the health protection zone, with an expanded list of sensitive receptors than what we had in our original ordinance, only reworks on active wells for public health and safety, and abandaments are permitted. There are two exceptions for how you can drill a new well in a health protection zone. One is interceptor, if you need, but you still have to get a permit from Calgem to do that, and the second is if a court of law finds that it's a takings and orders Calgem to permit the well. The ordinance has been changed to conform to Senate Bill 1137. We've also expanded, which we'll go over in a minute, the definition of sensitive receptors. However, what is before your board now would not have any local permitting inside the health protection zone. All of that permitting and all of that decision-making will be by the state of California. It is their law, and therefore, the complications of regulations that they're bringing forward, there are regulations that they have deferred on active wells, there is a whole list of workshops they're going through, we believe interferes with our ability to actually try and regulate inside that health protection zone. Therefore, there will be no local permit required, your board is not permitting inside the 3,200 feet, only a Calgem permit. Next slide. So let's review what that means. Yes, it is a circle around a sensitive receptor. So, I'm going to make sure what my next slide is. Okay, good, all right, not yet. So it essentially creates a circle around that sensitive receptor, and we will review what those are, of 3,200 feet. As we said in the staff report, and as we provided in the SSR EIR, including an extensive appendix, we have put all the information that the Science Advisory Committee at the state put into the record. Kern County is not saying that we agree that this is the right number, we are saying that we will respect the law and we will implement it. That is all we are saying, and that is all we are presenting to your board. Does this mean that the 3,200 feet moves? Yes, it does. If you build a new, next slide, if you build a new commercial daycare center, then suddenly there's a new 3,200-foot setback. Calgem has a website, and in that website, it takes the information that they have from their own GIS, from people who send them information, and they've created these health protection zones, but they do move. On the other hand, if a house disappears, and it's a vacant lot now, then there is no 3,200 feet. So it is not linked to the zoning, it is linked to a physical building, has to be a physical building there. It is also not linked to, well, what if there's a house and it's vacant? It's not about it being vacant, it's about it being a house. So those are some of the distinctions. So it's measured from the property line of the sensitive receptor, but if the receptor building is more than 50 feet from the property line, then they get to use that 50 feet, and it's the outline of the building footprint. Sensitive receptors, as you can see, are more extensive than what your board had, because it includes prisons, detention centers, and our original ordinance in 2015 said that there had to be a business that had at least 100 people. This could be a convenience market that has... This could be a convenience market that has one person come every two days. It's still considered a sensitive receptor under this. It is for those reasons that, and based on the complete analysis of everything that this Science Advisory Committee did, that we are making the recommendation to your board that we not cover permitting inside this 3,200 health protection zone. And that is codified that we will follow the state law on a setback. Next slide. The third issue was the water supply. So the final SSR EIR includes an extensive analysis of our disadvantaged communities, a list of our disadvantaged communities from our housing element in the Central Valley portion of Kern County. And we came to the determination that we could not find a direct link between the use of water for drilling by the oil industry, we're talking about drinkable water, we're not talking about processed water, which is the water that you bring up when you drill for oil, on the water supply. Because of the Groundwater Sustainability Act and the agency work, it is a complicated world when you're trying to determine the linkage between an industry use of water and declining wells, or the inability of wells to bring up water. The amount of the water supply used was not found invalid by the court, and the projection was that by 2040, new drilling every year, which is that cap we talked about, 2,697, would use 11,761 acre-feet a year. To put that in perspective, all of Kern County uses 2.8 million acre-feet of water per year. So it's 11,761 acre-feet a year. That's what we're talking about. We are, however, obligated under SEQA to put together the most feasible and reasonable mitigation, and there is feasible and reasonable mitigation. So we will be requiring a payment, a mitigation, of $9,732 per individual new well. So this is only new wells, not reworks, not sidetracks. This is a new well. And that will be used for a disadvantaged communities water relief fund. And that water, that money, which we're going to discuss, is going to be used for these projects, such as the extension of bringing fuller acres, for example, into a water district, or the work that's being done in Lamont. I'm sure you're aware that in Bakersfield, I guess it's technically East Bakersfield, there is the Victory Mutual Water Company. What we have is we have these older communities that had a mutual water company, they had a private water company, and over the years, they didn't collect enough money, they have ineffective management, and so they have a well failure, they need a new pump. The state of California has decreed mandatory that these types of communities need to be brought into a community services district, a city service district. The City of Shafto is working on one. And so, but there is a lack of money for capacity. These are the kinds of great projects that Self-Help Enterprises works very hard on. And so we will be directing this money to those types of projects as matching funds. The original, you have received an addendum, and I'd like to point out that this water supply mitigation measure, 4.17-3, has gone through a couple of different amendments. Subsequent to the release of the response to comments, and then after the planning commission, staff had further dialogue with organizations that work with disadvantaged communities on water issues, including the Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment, and Earth Justice. And they had provided comments on the draft SSR EIR in regards to water supply. We discovered that these communities actually have extensive experience with the state of California in regards to how these programs work. And so one of the things we did is we expanded the kinds of programs this money could be used for. And we're also want to create a more collaborative process to ensure communities are effectively engaged. These are the groups that work with Self-Help Enterprises and others, to work with the communities, to make sure they understand why their front yard is being torn up for a new water line, or what it's going to cost them in regards to going into these kinds of consolidations, and when their water is actually going to be brought back. So we need that collaboration with these community groups. So these recommended changes include the addition of another state water resources control board program, which is called the Safer Drinking Water Program, which is called Safe and Affordable Funding for Equity and Resilience Program. I believe the last allocation was $130 million. And this is designed to focus on at-risk, smaller systems that provide funding. Having both the safer and the consolidation funding avenues in the state, even though those projects are being cut, will provide a better opportunity for our Kern County communities. On the state water board's website, there are at least 42 failing water systems all over Kern County, with a large majority of them being in the Bakersfield area. So the amended mitigation measure, on page 48 of your staff report, was amended and the planning commission recommended it, and there was an advisory committee. Subsequent to that conversation, continued discussions concluded that the Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment indicated to due to other priorities and lack of capacity for participation, they were withdrawing their request for an advisory committee, and instead, we designed an expanded annual report program. Next slide. So as a reminder, this will bring in, depending on the number of permits, anywhere from $11.7 million to $26.3 million. This money could be used for matching funds for people such as the Lamont CSD, who just got a $28 million grant from the state, but then had to go out and get a loan because the state doesn't reimburse fast enough. There are many opportunities here that this money could be used for. And so in your addendum, we've designed, how is your board going to be kept informed? How is the industry going to know what we're spending this money on? So by December 31st of every year, the annual report will include a description of all the funding distributed, the projects underway, the state and federal grants applied for. It's also going to talk about anticipated projects. We're going to post it in English 30 days after that, to give us time to do a courtesy translation. We're going to post a Spanish version. And we will have a public hearing here at this board, where we're going to take public comments for 60 days, and then come to your board, so that everyone can come and give us feedback on, and give us direction on what kinds of projects are your board interested in, how are the projects going, how are the collections of money? We're going to also provide, in the report we bring to your board, responses to the comments we received. So we want to provide the communities, as well as the industry who is providing this money, access to the use and distribution. We want to provide access to the water districts. During the year, the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Staff, in consultation with public health, is going to be working with the state of California and with these communities on how to bring these, and the water districts, and how to bring these projects The revisions are shown in the addendum, which is also online, and the changes are shown in underline and strike-through. This is a legitimate, feasible, and reasonable way of linking the admittedly small use of water, but in our stressed water system in the Central Valley portion and our groundwater basins, one drop of water and one acre foot of water is a stress. This water, this, the sustainable groundwater base, I'm sorry, sustainable groundwater agencies have a different program that they have put funding towards for individual water wells. So this money is not for individual water wells. It is not for agricultural producers who have lost water. It is not for that. We designed the program based on the court's concerns that this was about, what about the disadvantaged communities? Next slide. So the addendum that you've gotten has further comments in support and opposition. I want to highlight a coalition of environmental groups who continue to be in opposition to the adoption. This coalition is comprised of Earth Justice, the Center for Biological Diversity, the Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment, Comitat Progresso de Lamont, Committee for a Better Shafto, Committee for a Better Arvin, Natural Resources Defense Council, and the Sierra Club. A response to those comments has been provided to your board, and in Chapter 7, Response to Comments, Volume 1A, Section 7.2.4, Interested Parties, Letter 5. Responses 005-1 to 005-74 provide detailed responses. These are not new comments, these are not new issues. We believe we have comprehensively responded to them, and your board, along with everyone, received a response to comments well before the planning commission took action. I do want to highlight, however, a main theme. You should deny this ordinance and instead focus on a transition. The comments assert that the benefits of a transition to renewable energy and other types of investments would happen if we declined to adopt the ordinance, ban fossil fuel production, and that the benefits to doing that are more because of the health impacts. As evidence, they submitted a report, which is attached to your addendum, called "A Program for Economic Recovery and Clean Energy Transition in California." The authors are from the Political Economic Research Institute of the University of Massachusetts in Amherst. It was done June 2021, and it was supposed to be a post-COVID analysis of economic factors. It has specific detailed reference to Kern County, Contra Costa County, and Los Angeles County, with very detailed focus on transitional opportunities in Kern County. However, for the record, while it emphasizes the extreme decline of tax revenues from oil and gas to Kern County, and prays for Kern County's work on renewable energy, the report ignores the impacts of the solar tax exclusion on the tax revenues from large-scale solar development, and concludes incorrectly that investment in renewable energy demonstrates, quote, "a viable path forward in transitioning the region's economy away from its longstanding dependence on fossil fuels," end of quote. It completely ignores the ongoing demand of gasoline and other oil and gas products in California that should be provided by in-state production that has been left out of the report. I'm highlighting this because the report states that an investment of $6.3 billion a year from 2021 to 2030 needs to be directed specifically to Kern County to complete the transition. $6.3 billion a year should be directed to Kern County, starting in 2021.
Well, that's easy.
To date, zero dollars of investment, zero, have been specifically made to the Kern County General Fund from either Sacramento or private foundations that would offset the losses of both the lack of oil and gas permitting and the solar tax exclusion, which started at $20 million, and now is $24 million loss of property taxes a year on those solar projects. Staff finds the report provides interesting statistics, provides no new pathway to fiscal stability for Kern County, and does not support a denial of the ordinance. The staff recommendation is supported by the findings provided for you in Exhibit B, SEQA 115091 Findings of Fact, Exhibit C, SEQA 15093 Statement of Overriding Consideration. Benefits of the project outweigh each significant and unavoidable adverse environmental impact. It's been provided with supporting information. The actual ordinance is Exhibit A, with changes for this 2025 consideration, shown in red. As a reminder, for those, for your consideration, although we've been in litigation for nine years, we did do 11,000 permits. In contrast, since permit was stopped by the courts in 2020, Calgem's lead agency has issued significantly less permits for new drilling statewide. This is statewide. In 2021, they did 564 permits. In 2022, they did 531. In 2023, they did 25. And in 2024, they did 85 permits, where we did an average of 1,800 with coverage from this EIR. Staff notes that none of the SEQA documents utilized for the few permits issued in Kern County by Calgem had any air-water noise or any other protective mitigation that are standard. I'd like to highlight that currently, mineral right holders in California have a legal right to access their minerals, and oil and gas activities are a significant contribution to the taxes and jobs that support Kern County communities. Many comments over the course of these years have focused on the experience of living near oil fields and health risks for both themselves personally and their children. You will hear those comments today. The location of oil field activities near disadvantaged communities is cited as an important reason to deny the ordinance and ban fossil fuel production. However, in July of 2024, the, sorry, in the implementation of Senate Bill 1137 and the new setback by the state of 3,200 feet, which is 1 kilometer, addresses these concerns as there's no new drilling close to sensitive receptors, which include homes, parks, schools, and daycares. And the requirements of SB 1137, if not changed, will mean that currently active wells will have a shortened operation life, so they cannot be reworked, and will eventually not be functional and have to be abandoned. Contrary to the letter that you have received in your addendum, there is no scientific foundation for the distance of 3,200 feet. They have asked that your board adopt that setback, as well as comply with state law. Staff has reviewed and placed in the, in the addendum, there's a full explanation of this, have looked at all of the information. It is all in an appendix of the EIR. We can find no evidence of any air modeling, evaluation of air modeling, it is, or any evidence of how that number was designed. There is extensive health studies, and we have placed every adverse health study possible, ones that have been given to us by the environmental groups, and ones that we actually track down. Those are all in these documents for your review. None of them have any basis for 3,200 feet, so we are going to follow the state law. As a reminder, a center of energy, Kern County supports the state climate goals through the 21,000 megawatts of renewable energy, which is now almost 70% of the renewable energy in California, and over 15,000 megawatt-hours of battery, which is 80% of the lithium batteries. This powers Southern California, the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, the Southern California Public Power Authority, which is 18 cities, as well as Northern California's Silicon Valley Clean Energy, East Bay Mud, as well as many others. Kern County Green Electrons power cities, homes, and businesses, parts of California. Yet California is still one of the largest consumers of transportation fuels in the U.S., and use is not declining as fast as proposed by the state. The referral, this was three years in production before we brought it to the board in 2015. That was three years of communications with industry, stakeholders, environmental groups, farmers. And the referral from the board that started that was to provide protections for communities from environmental impacts, while providing a streamlined pathway for oil and gas permitting in Kern County and state agencies. 90% of the current and future oil production under the proposed ordinance will be in the established areas of oil production, such as Elk Hills, Bell Ridge, Sunset Midway, Pozo, and Kern River Fields. The current level of regulation, which we have in the ordinance now, under Calgem authority, will not fully protect our natural resources and quality of life, and as shown by the lack of permitting over the last three years by Calgem, will not provide enough permits to keep oil in the San Joaquin Valley pipelines, or provide us the money that we need for the, all the public services, or the jobs that the communities need. The proposed text amendments and the FSSREIR represent a pathway for our oil and gas industry of certainty in permitting with enhanced environmental protection for at least the next 10 years through 2035 and beyond. It represents the best technology and a commitment from the industry, as neighbors and members of the community, that economic prosperity and environmental protection are possible in California. The revised recommendation that is in your addendum is to certify the second supplemental recirculated environmental impact report to 2025, adopt revised Section 15091 Findings of Fact, and Section 15093 Statement of Overriding. of Fact, and Section 15093 Statement of Overriding Considerations, adopt revised mitigation monitoring reporting program, adopt resolution, recommended findings, and enact ordinance approving revisions to Title 19 of the Kern County zoning ordinance, 2025A. This completes my presentation, and I'm always available for questions. Thank you.
Lorelei, this county, this country, our souls, we are so grateful to have your expertise. I remember when we submitted this in 2015, 10 years ago, Jennifer, 10 years ago. And it is striking because the timing is, David and I were the only people on this board when that, we were the two supervisors that were here at that time, if you recall. These other youngsters came later. But we submitted that, you know, in full hope that we could be recognized for the profound impact on economy, humanity, we could go on and on, but in real hopes and dreams that the contribution of Kern County, the expertise of Kern County, the science and the scientists of Kern County around environmental technology and the largest oil basin in the world, we had such high hopes. And here we are 10 years later, $68 million later of litigation costs to get a document through the California State Legislature and judicial system, $68 million. Excuse me, Lorelei, did you have something to add?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to note that the people sitting in the front row, the applicants, have come down to make their presentation. I forgot to say that.
Okay, thank you very much. So I would ask that the, well, my colleagues, do you have anything to ask now of staff or Lorelei at this time? David? Gentlemen? No, okay. So we'll come back to the board then for comments and actions. Lorelei, my understanding is we're going to WISPA, correct, first? WISPA's present? Okay, very good. So as I stated earlier, we're going to begin this process by having WISPA, SIPA, Chevron, CRC, and Berry, as I stated, and then we'll move forward to public comment. This has been a long run, my friend. Good to see you and welcome.
Thank you, indeed. It has been a long run. Good morning, everyone. My name is Suzanne Noble. I'm with the Western States Petroleum Association. I'm the Senior Director of Production Operations, and we're also known as WISPA. We appreciate the opportunity to address the board today. A little bit about WISPA, we are a nonprofit trade association representing companies that explore for, produce, refine, transport, and market petroleum and natural gas in California as well as four other western states. As noted, WISPA, along with the California Independent Petroleum Association, are applicants for these recommended revisions to this Kern County zoning ordinance and accompanying second supplemental recirculated EIR under the Environmental Quality Act. The proposed amendments to the ordinance comprise of yet another comprehensive update to our oil and gas development and production activities in Kern County while, at the same time, continuing safeguard Kern County's numerous environmental resources. WISPA appreciates the tremendous efforts to prepare a final supplemental EIR that ensures that the oil and gas activities in Kern County will continue and will be carried out in a manner that is protective of the environment. As noted, this second supplemental incorporates agriculture conservation easements for conservation of agricultural land, an assessment of drilling wells near sensitive receptors, and addressing water supply impacts. But most importantly, it continues compliance with close to 100 required mitigation and reporting measures, again ensuring quality projects and protections. WISPA members are committed to assuring their operations comply with all state, local, and federal laws. This includes compliance with all of the requirements for the Kern County oil and gas ordinance. It also includes compliance with California's Senate Bill 1137 and the health protection zone setbacks established by SB 1137, to the extent those setbacks apply to particular operations and they are required legally in effect. Our industry leads in innovation and environmental stewardship, and so does Kern County. WISPA strives to operate in harmony with our members and the communities and in compliance with all applicable regulations. California's based oil and gas production, especially in Kern County, provides essential supply of energy that keeps our economy and our citizens moving forward. The industry's future, as well as the county's economic and environmental future, depends on all of us moving this process forward. Many of us have heard statements that renewables are the only pathway, and I'm guessing we will hear that again from some today. But there is a misperception that the passage of this oil and gas ordinance somehow prevents sustainable energy development and employment in Kern County. This is wrong. There is room for both oil and gas and renewable development, particularly given the significant demand for energy in the state of California. Moreover, Kern County is the largest provider of both oil and gas and renewable energy in the state of California. Kern County is the 13th largest oil-producing county in the country and the number-one county in the country when it comes to renewable energy. While making no criticism of the renewable energy jobs, we would point out that those are future jobs, many of which are uncertain to timing. The oil and gas activities that will result from the passage of the ordinance are certain to occur in the near future. WISPA's members are prepared to go back to work in drilling new wells, providing good paid job wages, and to paying property taxes to the county of Kern. There are immediate environmental and economic benefits that result from the passage of this ordinance. We do respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors adopt this revised ordinance and supplemental EIR before you today. I would like to thank county staff for their interest and commitment in this effort, and thank you all for your time this morning.
Can I ask the representatives from SIPA to please come forward for your formal presentation? California Independent Petroleum Association, welcome, sir.
Good morning. My name is Jake Lopez, proudly representing Homes Western Oil Corporation that I work for, and I'm here on behalf of the California Independent Petroleum Association. It's good to see the supervisors and staff today. SIPA represents nearly 300 independent producers, service and supply companies, and royalty owners, and I rise today in support of the adoption of the revised Kern County oil and gas ordinance. SIPA, along with WISPA and IOPA, originally petitioned for this in 2015 for Kern County to be the lead agency for local permitting. Since then, the need for the county to be in control of its future has only grown. First, let's understand the problem. In the last year and a half, CalGEM has only approved 48 permits for new wells, even though over 1,300 NOIs were on their desk for consideration. In a normal year prior to 2019, the state would typically issue 2,000 to 3,000 new well permits. 2,000 to 3,000 then, just a couple now. And even if you do get a permit from the state, it is still susceptible to litigation. That's how this whole thing started in 2015. CalGEM was sued by the environmental groups for issuing a permit. They did not contest the lawsuits nor defend their process, they just pulled the permit. As a result of this, dozens of operators and service companies have filed for bankruptcy or left the state. Thousands of thousands of people have lost their jobs. Kern County has lost millions of dollars in tax revenue, and foreign oil imports are soaring. There's talk of transition in the state, but the only transition there is is to foreign oil. If we don't produce our liquid fuels here, it will come from somewhere else. Demand for liquid fuels has not decreased despite the state's best efforts, as was pointed out earlier. Shutting down current production simply weakens our communities here and strengthens foreign countries, many of whom do not share our values. Going forward, not only will this ordinance provide a predictable and efficient process, but permits will no longer be subject to further litigation as long as the mitigation measures are abide-by. As mentioned earlier, yes, industry is taking on the burden of 89 mitigation measures and their many costs, but without any certainty in the process, the oil workers who are left will not be able to plan for future capital projects, create jobs, pay royalty owners, pay property taxes, and provide the energy that all Californians, all Californians, demand every day. For these reasons, SIPA encourages the county to adopt the ordinance and take back control of our own destiny. Thank you, and I hope everyone has a safe drive home. I hope everyone has an affordable drive home. Thank you very much.
Then our next three are Chevron, CRC, and Berry, so I ask that you'd be teed up and please make your way down here. Thank you, welcome. Please state your name for the record. I understand you're representing Chevron today.
I am representing Chevron, and my name is Ali Pitts. I'm currently the Vice President of the San Joaquin Valley Business Unit for Chevron here in Bakersfield. So Chairwoman Perez, members of the Kern County Board of Supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Chevron is one of the largest oil producers in California. Most of our oil fields are in Kern County, and we've been operating here proudly for more than 100 years. Protecting people and environment is a core value for Chevron, so we appreciate all of Kern County's work on this very important and comprehensive environmental view you are considering today. The adoption of the SSSREIR and the reimplementation of the county's oil and gas permitting structure are critical to the long-term viability and sustainability of our business. The oil and gas industry, other companies we work with, help drive the economy in Kern County. This is important to the people of the community for many reasons. Chevron alone directly employs about 600 people in Kern County, and approximately 1,200 additional people are employed by our contractors, business partners who support our business. Last year, we spent $430 million on local products and services provided by businesses here in Kern County. For the year 2425, we paid $41 million in property taxes to the county. In addition, Chevron contributed $2.5 million to support Kern County community organizations that make our community a better place to work and live. This is all at risk because our business is in continual decline as we are unable to sustain our business through the drilling of new wells. We are committed to continuing to deliver affordable, reliable, and ever-cleaner energy that the people of California need and demand. This SSSREIR is aligned with this. There are affordability issues in California. Also, the recent events in the Middle East reinforce the need for energy security. With this, our industry has agreed to significant measures in the SSSREIR to achieve permitting in an environmentally sound and predictable structure. I respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors approve and adopt the SSSREIR. This will provide the county and its residents with increased assurance of safety and environmental responsibility in our operations while allowing the industry continue to operate in Kern County. On behalf of us at Chevron and the industry, we thank you for your support and, most importantly, your leadership on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll address it right in. So I want to acknowledge the significant moment that we're in right now for Kern County and the state, and I know how excited people are here and how respectful we are of the industries that have been so important to Kern County. But I've got a note, I'm in trouble, no more clapping, please, just for a whole host of reasons, it can be problematic for the legitimacy of our document, and we just want to be really careful not to allow that to creep in, although I've, you know, I understand the excitement and this moment, its importance, its profound and unprecedented. So please understand that the excitement is palpable and real. There's also people with very real concerns, and they have full opportunity to engage this body and to put their thoughts, their passion forward as well, and we don't, you know, we don't want them to feel outsized or not as important. So I appreciate you, but if we could please hold it, I would greatly, greatly appreciate it. We're moving on to, the next two presentations will be by CRC and then Berry. So Sierra, who's here from CRC? Hello, welcome, please come forward. You're not going to get a big applause, sir, I'm sorry. I think you'll be okay.
I'm disappointed, but I'll be fine. Good morning, Madam Chair, respected supervisors, and fellow county residents. My name is Omar Hyatt. I'm the Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer for California Resources Corporation. CRC is a publicly traded energy and carbon management company. We have operations across 130 oil fields, most of them located right here in Kern County. Beyond oil, we also operate a large midstream infrastructure with gas processing plants, power plants, and we have set up Carbon Terra Ward, which is our carbon dioxide capture and sequestration business. We have a workforce of 1,500 employees and thousands of contractors that show up every day on our leases to work in these oil fields. We prioritize operating safely and responsibly with a strong commitment to our local communities. We are committed to deliver affordable, reliable energy to Californians under the state's most rigorous environmental and labor standards. I'm here today on behalf of my children, both born and raised here in Bakersfield, my fellow coworkers, and my community, and I respectfully ask that you certify the second supplemental recirculated environmental impact report. Adopt the updated county oil and gas ordinance and reinstate local land use authority over oil and gas activities. These steps will represent an important move forward for an industry that is vital for every person in the county, the Central Valley, and California at large. Kern County Planning Department, under the competent leadership of Ms. Ovead, has done a tremendous job to address concerns from all the stakeholders in this supplemental report. At CRC, we support balanced, science-based regulations that protect both our environment and our communities. However, as the earlier speakers have mentioned, the increasing burden of overregulation on our industry, which is Kern County's largest private sector employer, has led to a loss of investment and good-paying jobs, while at the same time increasing state's dependence while at the same time increasing state's dependence on foreign oil, the oil that comes from places that do not have, that do not have the same standards around safety, labor, human rights, and environmental standards. Again, I respectfully urge the board to stand with Kern County's workforce and help secure a more self-sufficient future for California. Let's ensure that every drop of energy consumed here is produced here and is produced under California's standards and by California workers. I thank you all for the opportunity to speak in front of the board.
Thank you, sir. Berry Corporation, if that representative can head down, state your name for the record, please. Greatly appreciate it. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, supervisors and staff and everyone behind me. Willie Rivera here, Vice President of Corporate Affairs for Berry Corporation, here on behalf of the over 1,000 men and women who work for Berry and C&amp;J Well Services in strong support of the items before you today. Like Chevron and others, Berry has a long history of operating in Kern County with our very first well being drilled in 1909 by CJ Berry. More than 100 years later, we're still going strong, and we're still proud to be in the business of producing energy needed to fuel the world's fourth-largest economy, that is California. We do this under California's robust laws and regulations because we understand how important our work is to keeping California moving. Despite the consistent demand we see for our product, California now imports over 75% of its crude from foreign sources. And it really doesn't have to be that way. Kern County has resources we can harness, and we can do that while protecting the environment and providing the resources that our community needs. Adopting the revised ordinance and supplemental environmental impact report under consideration today is a critical step in ensuring California can continue to meet the overwhelming demand for oil and gas. And it's a critical step in ensuring Kern County can continue to be a leader in providing energy for our state. We, you know, strongly support the county's extensive efforts to ensure energy producers like Berry can continue to operate successfully in California. And we applaud the county's extensive work over the years to ensure this is done right. You know, you heard earlier that this journey began in 2012. I think I was in college then, hadn't even begun my professional career. I couldn't even legally drink alcohol. Now, now we're here in 2025, and this marks a significant milestone. It's the result of countless hours of technical work and stakeholder and community engagement. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the Planning Department Director Oviad and this board and your staff for their diligence and work throughout this process. Berry's commitment to this county runs deep, and our commitment to helping the state meet its energy needs for decades to come is unwavering. And approving the items before you today is critical for the county's energy industry. Our community needs this. California needs this now more than ever. And on behalf of Berry, the employees here in attendance over in the corner there, and for the employees that are in our fields and in our offices working right now, we strongly urge your support, and we thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. That concludes the official presentation from representatives. These are folks that have been engaged in the litigation for the last decade. They have paid for that litigation, and they have a certain status under the law. They are official representatives. We are now going to move to the public hearing portion, which we will put our timer into place now. I understand we have a lot of input, and we're eager to hear from you and address your issues. I promise you. We're going to transition now, no pun intended, to the public speakers that are opposed to this document, that have issues, concerns, or even if you're not completely opposed, but you want the board to consider some things, change some things. Now is the time for you to talk, address the board. Thank you for being here, welcome and good morning. Please state your name for the record.
Ellis E.L.L.I.S. Clem, C.L.E.M.M. It started already? Wait a minute.
Yeah, one second, we're going to restart it. There we go.
So by a show of hands, who lived here in 1969? Anybody? Because I did, and I can remember going south over the grapevine and traveling through an eight-mile, eight-mile thick layer of smog that I have to turn my lights on for. And on the backside, a 34-mile. Of course, I wasn't old enough to drive then, but I can remember it. And I'm here to remind you right now that we are living in the worst air quality in the nation. And by living here your whole life, you shorten your life by eight years, by the pollution. And we have, in Kern County, we have over 100,000 wells, oil wells. Of those wells, 40,000 are active wells, and of those wells, only 10,000 are producing wells. At the same time, we have 41,568 orphaned wells. Orphaned wells are wells that are unplugged and not producing and have no responsible operator. I invite you, Mr. Flores, to go out there and adopt a well, okay? Put your house on it and make it your child, one of these orphaned wells. Do we need to really drill another well? We need to stop this insanity. The clock is ticking on our future generations. When will we stop poisoning our future with fossil fuels? The orphaned wells, they produce, emit methane, benzene, and other toxins that harm our environment on a daily basis. They hold neighborhoods under siege where they scared to leave. For those people that say climate change is a hoax, I say if you lived here 50 years ago, you should be able to remember days, weeks, and months of thick, truly fog.
Mr. Clem.
Day after day in the winter, so thick you couldn't see your hand in front of your face.
Mr. Clem, you got to bring your comments to a close, sir.
I got to what?
Bring your comments to a close, we're almost a minute over.
Okay, sorry. So anyway, for those people that think climate change is a hoax, remember the truly fog, please. What happened to it? Where'd it go? Months upon months, my kids don't even know what a fog delay is. Thank you very much, supervisors.
Thank you, sir. This is a time for, thank you for your passion, sir, and thank you for your patience. Who, this is a public speaking time for opposition? So please come forward and state your name for the record. We're eager to hear from you. Thank you for taking the time to be here, welcome.
Hello, thank you, my name is Cesar Aguirre, longtime resident of Kern County. And I want to note that there were PhDs and studies that did show that there were health effects from oil production. From those state-funded studies, there was found from Johnson et al. in 2021 that larger reductions in lung function were observed with decreased distances from active oil and gas developments, and also from Guarnarian bombs in 2014, that air pollutants associated with oil and gas development are well-known to contribute to respiratory morbidity and mortality, including exacerbations of existing respiratory issues. We also know from the state of the air report that we get every year and that we have failed every year, that we have some of the worst air quality in the nation. And we've also been the only air basin that has not met air quality standards that were set in 1997 by Bill Clinton. It is true that we do not have the same standards as folks overseas, but when we look at data portals like the Carbon Mapper, it shows that just Southern California has over 900 methane and carbon leaks. That's more than any other individual country. That's more than the entirety of the EU combined. California cannot keep producers from leaking, and the evidence shows through satellite data. When it comes to compliance, the folks that mention that they want to be responsible in the way that they produce also actively oppose energy infrastructure that is not directly tied to oil and gas, energy or infrastructure. They also oppose regulations that protect communities like SB 1137, which is the reason why no permitting is going to happen within 3,200 feet because 10 PhDs did say that it is unsafe for somebody to live within that distance. On top of that, CAGR, which is the California Oil and Gas Rule, is out of date. It has to be updated to meet the Quad O C standards. And right now, there is open venting that is allowed at both tanks and wellheads. For example, there is a well next to Truxton Park that is allowed to vent into the open air where people recreate, walk, and run. Companies in Kern County really want us to be dependent on a resource that is part of a global market that ebbs and flows, that we do not control, all while fighting local energy production and infrastructure that is not tied to oil and gas, and fighting legislation and rules for clean energy and responsible production. So let's be sure that we protect Kern and Kern citizens by making sure that health is a number-one priority and realizing that while they say they want to do things responsibly, they actively fight against regulation that makes sure that things can be done in a way that's not going to harm public health. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Supervisor Peters, please.
Just had something, it's okay, sir, thank you. I just wanted to give somebody an opportunity. It looks like a can of Copenhagen grew legs and rolled down here to the podium, so. We got to get the first, the important stuff out of the way real quick.
Peters, you have an eagle eye out of Copenhagen. That was impressive. Wow.
That's his brand.
Wow. Kern County. Kern County, baby. Thank you, Peters. That was absolutely critical to be dealt with immediately. Hello, welcome, and please state your name for the record.
Kayla Karimi. Good morning, I am a staff attorney with the Center on Race Poverty in the Environment and Environmental Justice Organization here in Kern County. I would like to emphasize to the board that the concept of this ordinance is dangerous. It would fast-track thousands of new oil and gas wells over the decades to come with significant impacts on air quality, water supplies, and public health. I'd also like to strongly urge the county to adopt the science-backed 3,200-foot health protection zone in the ordinance, regardless of the status of state law SB 1137. Our Kern communities are already overburdened with the harms from oil and gas and do not need these environmental harms expeditiously exacerbated by this ordinance without a thorough and site-specific environmental review process. We appreciate the productive dialogue we've had with the county regarding improving the water supply mitigation. We do believe this mitigation has improved and hope to continue these kinds of collaborations and communications with the county. However, the water mitigation improvement does not make this ordinance prudent or eliminate the harms to our communities. The county should take the community input seriously, ground its decisions in thorough environmental analysis, and pursue a path that supports a healthier, more sustainable future for all Kern County residents. We respectfully ask the Board of Supervisors to not adopt the ordinance. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can we ask your name and who you're representing again?
Kayla Karimi with the Center on Race Poverty in the Environment.
How do you spell your last name?
K.A.R.I.M.I.
Thank you so much. Ms. Karimi, thank you. Center on Race Poverty in the Environment, thank you. My apologies, we didn't start the clock on that, but we'll reset it in just a moment here. Excellent, welcome, good morning.
I hope you'll keep me in check this time. My name is Saman De Silva. I'm here as a staff member with the Center on Race Poverty in the Environment. And I want to start by thanking the board for hearing us out and Ms. Cook for her ongoing willingness and openness to work with our staff and elevate community voices. As regards the proposed ordinance, I would like to acknowledge a few facts in line with what Cesar outlined. In California alone, Jill Johnston at USC proved that communities living within a mile of an oil well experienced reduced respiratory function. Similarly, David Gonzalez at Stanford and Berkeley found association with preterm births and living within a mile of an oil well. The same is true for increased exposure to PM 2.5, VOCs, benzene, nitrous oxide, and carbon monoxide. And outside of California, numerous studies have documented the toxicity of oil and gas, not just to public health, but also to local community well-being. The fact pattern is clear and generally hard to deny. It is in your hands now to decide what we do with that information. This ordinance only seeks to make Kern County's air quality worse. This ordinance doubles down on the county's extreme dependence on oil and gas, and this ordinance is a rejection of the clean, diversified, and healthful economy that Kern County ought to build. At least, I hope that the board heeds and codifies the standard set by SB 1137. The law seeks to set a minimum of a 3,200-foot setback zone, 3,200-foot setback zone, the largest in the nation. Yet, in most studies conclusively linking oil wells to negative community health exposures, the radius is 5,200 feet, or a mile. These, as Ms. Cook pointed out, are not comprehensive atmospheric chemistry modeling, but they are associative studies which have been published and peer-reviewed in epidemiological journals. The county should seek to continue the implementation of a 3,200-foot buffer zone. I see the county at a crossroads with this ordinance. To implement this ordinance would abdicate a duty of care to community members, already overburdened by pollution. I respectfully ask that the Board of Supervisors not move forward with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I didn't catch your first name.
Me neither. Saman De Silva, S.A.M.A.N.
Thank you.
Thank you.
De Silva.
De Silva.
Thank you, sir. Quite articulate young man. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, my name is Sandra Placencia Rodriguez, and I am the Climate Justice Organizer for United Domestic Workers. United Domestic Workers represents over 200,000 childcare and healthcare providers throughout the state. Our members take care of our most vulnerable populations, children, elderly, disabled, and sick individuals. UDW is committed to ending systemic inequality and building better lives for our members, their families, and the people they serve. Some of our members' clients have been victims of environmental injustices. That is why we stand in solidarity with the organizations and individuals fighting against the expansion of oil and gas in Kern County. UDW has over 8,000 members in Kern County, many of whom are workers and have direct ties to the oil and gas field. We understand the importance of oil and gas, but we urge the county to divest from its dependence on oil and gas and instead focus on improving workers' rights for workers who work in these industries. For example, a healthcare provider has a son who spent 30 years as a refinery worker. Her son had to leave the industry due to severe back injuries he developed due to his work as a refinery worker and now requires in-home supportive care to be able to survive on a daily basis. Additionally, many of our members who live in Arvin and Lamont have continuously shared frustration over respiratory and cardiac issues, with many sharing that they exhibit constant nosebleeds and migraines in relation to living next to oil and gas. Ms. Oviad shared that all new oil drillings would be far from homes and communities, so to dismiss our community concerns at the planning commission. But I ask you this, when there's a fire, we smell it miles away. We feel the heavy air even miles away. The same is true for oil and gas, we just can't see it. We ask the Kern County Board of Supervisors to vote against the oil and gas drilling expansion, and I leave you with this quote from one of our members. "The days I migrate to work in the Apple Harvest in Washington are the happiest days of my life because I can finally breathe. Why can't my home be like that?" Thank you.
Sandra, what did you say your title is now?
I am the Climate Justice Organizer.
Thank you.
Hello, welcome and good morning.
Good morning, my name is Emma de la Rosa with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Our transportation system has laws and regulations to prevent reckless driving, like speeding and driving under the influence. Once someone decides to engage in this behavior, they're called negligent, rightfully so. It's the same thing for oil companies who, while knowing there are laws to permit their wells and requirements and mitigation measures that they should follow, they willfully break those laws and mitigation measures. That too is negligent. Your policy decision to adopt this ordinance to streamline 2,000-plus wells will also be negligent. In the showcase of the binders, staff failed to mention the recorded times that oil and gas companies have negligently allowed oil and methane leaks, and the number of times idle and abandoned wells have also been responsible for methane leaks. How are we now, the public, supposed to trust that the same county and the same department who has turned a blind eye to these leaks will also ensure that the ordinance of this kind will be safe? The county recently adopted a housing element with a deficient, disadvantaged, unincorporated community analysis required by government, code 65302.10A. The county does not even know how many communities and isolated residential dwellings exist within the county boundaries without clean drinking water and wastewater infrastructure. We cannot trust that your ordinance fully mitigates impacts to these communities when you don't have an understanding of your county's own infrastructure deficiencies. To correct the county staff, Victory Mutual and Fuller Acres Water Projects are both in the process of potential consolidation because of state funding, which does not require a matching fund currently. The county is not contributing funds for these projects. The county has also failed to comply with government code 65302H to adopt an environmental justice element to reduce pollution exposure in disadvantaged communities. Again, another example of the county breaking a law. Can we expect that the ordinance will be considered and be in alignment with the law meant to protect communities from pollution burden? It's hard to think so. Also, it's very disingenuous to have oil companies and staff here Also, it's very disingenuous to have oil companies and staff here say that they care for the safety and the protection of our communities when oil workers outside and their own management are laughing at public speakers because they can't get through their comments within the two-minute timeframe when oil companies had more than two minutes to speak. Very disingenuous. Really, again, think about it. Oil companies can continue to, you know, request new wells, they would just have to go through a project-specific EIR. No one's saying no more oil wells. We're saying don't streamline oil wells. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Hi, good morning. My name is Woody Little. I'm with the Last Chance Alliance, but I'm here on behalf of over 90 groups who signed a letter submitted to you all in opposition to the project. Many of those groups based here in Kern County, many of them statewide with members here in Kern County, and others in solidarity with those folks and their health concerns as well as all of our shared concerns about our shared climate. This ordinance would authorize as many as tens of thousands of new wells with a single high-level and inadequate EIR undermining transparency and sound public decision-making. That's one of the key concerns in that letter. I wanted to emphasize to the discussion around setbacks and the 1-kilometer distance, my understanding of the scientific advisory panel to Calgem and their findings is that they found that there was no safe distance from oil and gas development in their research and review of the literature. And so the 1-kilometer distance evolved and was presented based on a prioritization and an attempt to balance the different factors at play, but I wanted to emphasize again that finding. We urge you to devote your energies, instead of through this ordinance, to doubling down on the very notable and welcome progress and leadership on renewable energy development that we have seen here in Kern County, and to addressing the growing problem of orphaned and often leaky idle wells that have been mentioned here today. Continue, build out while that continues to grow without adequate review. We're worried that that will worsen the problem of orphaned and idle wells and the taxpayer liability for cleanup costs that we'll all ultimately face. Thank you so much. Again, just wanted to emphasize opposition to the project on behalf of those 90-plus groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Wait one second if you don't mind. Supervisor Couch?
Quick question. I want to hear that again, just the piece about the 3,200-foot setback. What was used to determine that?
My understa-- it's all there in a very long scientific advisory panel, which I did not participate or--
Yeah, but what did you just tell us?
My understanding is that the finding of the scientific advisory panel, was it based on their review of the literature? They did not find any safe distance from oil and gas development. They found that there was no safe distance.
How did they land on 3,200 feet is my question. What is your understanding of that?
My understanding is that there are some studies cited that were based around a 1-kilometer distance. Ms. Oviat might be more familiar with the literature and the research.
I'm asking you, because you stepped to the microphone and--
Sure. My understanding is that there are some studies that reference a 1-kilometer distance. There are many that reference a 1-mile distance.
You're not citing those studies, but there are some, if that's what you're saying.
That's my understanding. I'd be happy to review and follow up with the board after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Woody Little, right?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. That's a great name. Okay. Hello, welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Mercedes Macias. I'm with the Sierra Club National, and there's also the other people from Sierra Club, the local chapter here. I'm not going to take, you know, they can speak on their behalf as well. I did submit rather late some comments this morning. I hope the board or the clerk of the board received that. If not, it was sent this morning from our, we collected petitions against this ordinance. We're against this as a whole, mostly because we believe in site-specific environmental impact review. And I just wanted to mention, you know what? I appreciate the clapping that was happening earlier. It was really jovial, it was really enjoyable, and if you want to clap again, clap again for me. And yeah, honestly, I did want to mention that Lorelei Oviat has spoken about SB 1137 and its significance and how they're not challenging state law. That's great. You also have the authority here in Kern County to establish your own setbacks, and I hope you do, and I hope you take the science, scientific advisory recommendation from Calgem into consideration. And if you don't have access to that scientific findings, there is a whole presentation you can find from Calgem where they go in depth and talk about why they made the recommendation for 3,200-foot setbacks, but it is an arbitrary amount, an arbitrary distance, because I believe there is no safe distance, and that is what the scientific finding suggests as well. And I also want to say that it's really disingenuous when we hear, I don't mind cheering, I don't mind clapping, but I'm also hearing coughing and comments on sexuality of our people who are here in opposition from people back there, so I'm just gonna throw that--
I'm really sorry to hear that.
--and it's so completely inappropriate, but genuinely clap, because all of the oil and gas companies have come here today and said that they are working with us, with the county, with the intention of working and protecting the environment and protecting public health. I hope they genuinely mean that, because if they do, they will ask that the county do a setback, and maybe it's more than 3,200 feet, maybe it's a little less, but hopefully something that works within your purview. Thanks.
Thank you so much. We are still speaking in opposition. Could I get a sense of how many people are still here to speak in opposition? I see you, sir. I see one. Anybody else? I'd ask you to come down. If you wouldn't mind, come down to the front, we've reserved that space so that we can keep the meeting moving. We have lots of folks to hear from still today, but so please come on down, I'd really appreciate it. Hello, welcome. Good morning to you.
Good day, Chairman Perez. Before my time starts, I just wanted to take a few seconds to say it's unfortunate that I don't have time to unpack some of the missed, dis, and mal information from over here another time. I'm David Hartley, H-A-R-T-L-E-Y. I've been a producer, causing production to happen for over 50 years in Kern County. I've got well-serviced rigs, drilling rigs, and I get oil on my hands every single day. I'm in that environment. I had to remove oil from these Levi's so I could be clean to come down today. So here's my prepared remarks, because I knew I only had about two minutes. The 2015 Lorelei-Whispa Axis Ordinance was passed for one primary reason: to speed up permitting of new wells, but it failed spectacularly to do so. And getting a permit doesn't involve just a job card from Lorelei, it actually means you get a permit from Calgem and you can do actual drilling. Not only did the ordinance fail to speed up permitting, it caused the state to stop permitting wells after the first legal failure of the ordinance because the county preempted the state by becoming the lead agency for SEQA matters. So in other words, once it failed, the state took the position, and we got the communique from the state that said, hey, Kern County's ordinance has failed, they took on the leadership role for SEQA, there's nothing we can do. So that's a direction they wanted to take us, and that was ammunition and actually the gun to say, we're stopping. Kern County, you guys got a little arrogant, we're going to make you eat it. You haven't heard that before. Now, the Lorelei-Whispa Axis are intent on tripling down on stupid. This will be the third time, if you vote and the man in the robe reinstates, that the third time that this ordinance will be tried. And for the supervisors, I just want to know, how many times do you need the ordinance to fail before you decide to change course? And I'm for drilling. I'm a proponent of oil. I'm just an opponent of this. Because SEQA, this is a very important point--
Wrap it up, sir.
--SEQA was never intended to permit projects countywide. It was on a project-by-project basis. The legislation reads that. Lorelei's ordinance will continue to fail in the future. It's simply not a durable process under which to permit new wells.
Okay, sir. I gotta ask you to bring your comments to a close.
So--
Please.
--unfortunately, I don't have time to address the punishing fees, the regulatory costs, and burdens, but the biggest rub of this whole thing is that I paid $120,000 per well to drill a series of deep wells on the east side, and $120,000 to get Lorelei's stamp on a job card, and 90% of the money went to my enemy, which is the Air Resources Board, and they in turn fund grants to groups that attacked me. So truly, through this ordinance, we're funding our enemies, and I don't think you guys have time to listen to the rest of what I have to say unless you'll give me another 30 seconds.
No, sir. Thank you. Can I ask whoever's next to please come forward? Please state your name for the record. Mr. Shin, I recognize you.
Yes, ma'am.
Nice to see you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and good morning to the supervisors. I don't want to be confused with an anti-oil person. I am pro-oil. Drill, baby, drill. But I do think this ordinance has difficulties or problems. Einstein, and also I think everybody who's been counter to the oil is going to be driving home today. Einstein once said that you can define insanity by doing the same thing over and over again. The battle before us is complex. Big oil can withstand big regulation and delays. Our state is doing everything possible to kill state and local oil production. The big companies can outlast, outspend the small independent producers. Regulations are a tool used by big government to punish the regulated entity. Can we all agree on that? We have to stop doing stupid things. Seven-tenths, and this is just a brief talk about water, seven-tenths of the earth is covered in water, yet after the state misallocates this resource and how to purpose its use, water is now regulated to what in the future? 50 gallons per person? I think the governor said that. That's pretty ludicrous. Oil is an abundant resource in Kern County, and the method to extract its use is brought out by the best technology in the world, right here. Yet, our king and ruler Gavin Newsom fights to kill the industry by regulation and purchasing foreign oil, killing local jobs and killing small producers, leaving the biggest oil producers to pick up the pieces. Just like in the movie There Will Be Blood, which is a great movie--
Yes, it is.
--the fight before us is truly to save the smallest producers, and thereby we save the entire industry. I ask that you make a motion to delay this failed ordinance so that we can come up with a more successful and resourceful path for all oil producers in Kern County. Thank you.
Mr. Shin, thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. Jess Sanders, I'm not here to oppose oil. I've looked at over 70 binders here that involves this whole thing, and I'm wondering if you're familiar with all the language in there, because I'm sure some is detrimental to Kern County. So I'd ask you to have that reviewed. I'm not asking you to stop, I'm asking you to delay it and review it. Again, I'm going to, with the people here that are absolutely opposed to oiling, they all drove here, they use plastic combs, they use whatever, and they, not only did Shin point out that they kill jobs and taxes here, when you're producing oil in other countries that have no EPA or child protection, they're killing everybody. We have the cleanest means of producing oil right here. So within these, I'm hoping that there's nothing in there detrimental to this county, whether it's kickback by big oil that knocks out our local independent oil contractors. All I'm asking you to do is to review it and make sure there's nothing in-- that's four years' worth of reading for one person, so it really needs to be researched.
That's ten years.
That's more like 10 years. Good point.
Our Air Source Board--
Literally.
--is now putting a 65-cent tax on our oil production, on our gas, per gallon, for each one of these people that are driving. Put there by an NGO appointed by Governor Newsom. So he is out to kill Kern County in their production of oil, in their farmland. Some of these restrictions on the farmland with 1,000 feet around a house or whatever that was, they're trying to protect that farmer or that house, but that same person is denying them water so they can buy the farmland pennies on the dollar to build big houses or complexes for their 15-minute cities. They are not looking out for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. It's good seeing you. Welcome. Almost good afternoon, but good morning.
Greetings. My name is Lori Pisante, and I am the Chapter Director of the Kern Cuiya, Chapter of the Sierra Club, and I realize that I just said a couple of words that are probably triggering to people in this room and people watching on the livestream, but I am still a human being, and I assure you I do not have horns growing out of my head. But I should be able to walk up to this podium and not be called a Nazi like the guy who just spoke called us earlier. I would encourage us to recall that oil is a fact of our life right now. Here I am, I'm a Chapter Director of the Sierra Club, oil is a fact of our life right now. I am going to get into my car, and it is an internal combustion engine, right? I do believe, though, that it is also a fact that we all are facing very serious problems together. And the oil and gas research that was done in the '50s, '60s, '70s, and '80s out of Bell Labs made it very clear that we are causing climate change through the combustion of fossil fuels. This is a basic fact of our lives, right? And it's a difficult problem to solve. Nobody is denying that. It is not helpful to allow trigger words to stop us from talking to one another, and I am more than open to speaking to anybody who wants to have a serious conversation with me about these serious problems that we do face together. It is also the case that we oppose this ordinance for many of the reasons that we have already submitted on the record. I'm more than happy to have conversations with folks about why we have taken those positions. My kids are growing up here, they are born and raised here. I, myself, have grown up here, spent my entire adult life here. I would prefer to be treated like your neighbor and not your enemy. Please oppose this ordinance and please encourage us not to be triggered by these words. Encourage us to join in solving problems together, please, because we cannot fall prey to the campaign finance and lobbying in the PR machine that is Whispa and these other things. It's not helping things. I'd rather have a direct conversation with real people who are here trying to solve problems together with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. I want to state for the public, we are going to take a 30-minute break at 12 o'clock, and we're going to return, of course, we have a lot of work to do, but I just want to let you know that's where we are. I'm hopeful we'll wrap up our opposition comments. How many more opposition speakers do we have? Can I see a showing? Please, opposition speakers. Okay. I do not see opposition speakers left. Is that correct, ma'am, or you?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So I guess we have a question now, Kathy. Do we break now, or do we wait till noon and allow, you know, the other part of the community to be heard? What's your, gentlemen, what's your sense?
Well, we have a clean break now.
Yeah, that's my sense. Okay. Thank you. That was my sense as well. I know, I'm sorry. I don't mean to put anybody out, but we still have quite a bit of information to process through. My colleagues, of course, are going to have to listen to folks that are in support of this and whatever recommendations they make, and we have to sift through that. We still have a few hours in the making. So I'm going to break now and ask that we return. It would be really fabulous if we could be back here by 12:20 and that we were on the record and moving by 12:30. But with Chris Parlier's suggestion to adjourn, we will be back at 12:20. Thank you.
Let's do it. Mm-hmm. Let's do it. Okay, excellent. Please come in and have a seat. We are starting momentarily. Please come in and have a seat. Thank you and welcome back. We're not running anything on this. Okay, we are back in session. I want to note for the record, this is the return or the after-break continuation of the special meeting of the Board of Supervisors, June 26 regarding our oil and gas permitting. The Board has reconvened officially with all members present. If you recall, prior to the break, we had an opportunity to hear from staff, representatives from the applicants that have been engaged in this process for the last decade, arguably the last century. So now, we had an opportunity to hear from members of the community who have real concerns. They stated those for the record. We are going to respond to those in a timely fashion. And we appreciate all that hard work and passion that goes into the love and protection you feel for the community. I sincerely appreciate it. We have now an opportunity to hear from folks that have come to provide public comment in support of the ordinance and the process that county has been engaged in for the last decade. So I understand, and I'd like to start off by asking of our Assemblyman, Stan Ellis is present. Where are you, Stan? Ah, there you are. Excellent. Welcome. It's so good to see you. You are, the floor is yours. Please state your name for the record for those who don't know you.
Stan Ellis.
Can't hear you, Stan.
Yeah, there we go. Stan Ellis, Assemblymember, Chairman's staff, thank you, and members. Lorelei, great job as usual. Coincidentally, I moved here 50 years ago this week.
Oh, wow.
And I've been in the oil and gas sector ever since. I'll make this real brief. As already mentioned, we're bringing in a million barrels a day from countries that have no environmental regulations, and they're burning number six fuel oil in the internal combustion engines on their ships, which put out poly-nuclear aromatic hydrocarbons such as phenanthricine, benzopyrene, all of these bad actors. There's 13 of them regulated hazardous by the EPA. We put out, in California, the cleanest oil and gas in the world, from the wellhead to the tanks, to the pipeline, to the refinery. We are held to the highest standards in the world. We cannot emit volatile organic compounds, emissions of any type, because we are regulated by the air quality management districts, and we will be fined. We put, again, we put out the cleanest oil and gas in the world. $60 to $80 million a day lost to our county because we're importing oil. 35,000 jobs passed this ordinance drill, baby, drill.
I know, you're so sweet. Yeah, I know. It's an exciting and pivotal moment in Kern County. I get it. And so, I feel it's palpable, and I appreciate it. But as we move forward, just ask that, you know, we wait till, wait till the end. Thank you. Hello, welcome. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Leslie Minor. And I'm...
Let's do it. Let's do it. Okay, excellent. Please come in and have a seat. We are starting momentarily. Please come in and have a seat. Thank you and welcome back. We're not running anything on that. Okay, we are back in session. I want to note for the record, this is the return or the after-break continuation of the special meeting of the Board of Supervisors, June 26 regarding our oil and gas permitting. The Board has reconvened officially with all members present. If you recall, prior to the break, we had an opportunity to hear from staff, representatives from the applicants that have been engaged in this process for the last decade, arguably the last century. So now, we had an opportunity to hear from members of the community who have real concerns. They stated those for the record. We are going to respond to those in a timely fashion. We appreciate all that hard work and passion that goes into the love and protection you feel for the community. I sincerely appreciate it. We have now an opportunity to hear from folks that have come to provide public comment and support of the ordinance and the process that county has been engaged in for the last decade. So I understand, and I'd like to start off by asking of our Assemblyman, Stan Ellis is present. Where are you, Stan? Ah, there you are. Excellent. Welcome. It's so good to see you. You are, the floor is yours. Please state your name for the record, for those who don't know you. Can't hear you, Stan.
Got it. There we go. Stan Ellis, Assemblymember, Chairman's Staff, thank you, and members. Laura Lai, great job as usual. Coincidentally, I moved here 50 years ago this week. And I've been in the oil and gas sector ever since. I'll make this real brief. As already mentioned, we're bringing in a million barrels a day from countries that have no environmental regulations, and they're burning number six fuel oil in the internal combustion engines on their ships, which put out poly-nuclear aromatic hydrocarbons such as phenanthricine, benzo, benzo pyrene, all of these bad actors, there's 13 of them regulated hazardous by the EPA. We put out, in California, the cleanest oil and gas in the world, from the wellhead to the tanks, to the pipeline, to the refinery, we are held to the highest standards in the world. We cannot emit volatile organic compounds, emissions of any type, because we are regulated by the air quality management districts, and we will be fined. We put, again, we put out the cleanest oil and gas in the world. $60 to $80 million a day lost to our county because we're importing oil, 35,000 jobs past this ordinance drill, baby, drill.
I know, you're so sweet. Yeah, I know, I know. It's an exciting and pivotal moment in Kern County. I get it. And so, I feel it's palpable, and I appreciate it. But as we move forward, just ask that, you know, we wait till, wait till the end. Thank you. Hello, welcome. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Leslie Minor, M-I-N-O-R, and I'm the interim Superintendent President for Taft College in the city of Taft. And first of all, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity today to speak on an issue that strikes at the heart of our regional identity and our economic future. Taft College, founded in 1922, stands in the heart of California's energy corridor, a region whose identity and economy have been shaped for over a century by the oil and gas industry. The college was established in direct response to the needs of a growing energy workforce. Our college and the oil industry have grown side by side for over a century. The Midway Sunset Oil Field, one of the largest and most productive in the country, was not only the catalyst for the formation of the city of Taft, but also the reason our institution, Taft College, even exists. For generations, local families, many supported by careers in the energy sector, have relied on Taft College to provide education, training, and pathways to advancement. But this relationship is not just historic, it remains vital today. Our programs in energy technology, safety, and STEM fields have been directly supported by the oil and gas industry. These partnerships have led to internships, apprenticeships, and job placements that keep our local workforce employed and skilled. However, we've seen firsthand the impact of economic disruption. Between the global downturn in oil markets, tightening state regulations, and the COVID-19 pandemic, the energy sector in Kern County has faced significant challenges, and the effects have rippled throughout the community. At Taft College, we feel this impact clearly. Before COVID, our annual enrollment was relatively stable. By fall 2020, in the midst of the pandemic and an uncertain energy outlook, the number fell significantly, we lost a third of our enrollment. This wasn't just a reflection of remote learning challenges, it reflected a deeper instability in our local economy. When energy jobs disappear, families struggle, and educational access narrows. But it's important to emphasize, this is not just about preserving the past, it's about securing a viable, balanced economic future. Oil and gas production continues to provide thousands of jobs in Kern County, and remains a critical source of tax revenue for schools, public safety, and infrastructure. At Taft College, we support responsible energy development because it sustains the livelihoods of our students, our staff, our faculty, and our community members. We also believe that traditional energy and future-focused innovation can coexist. In fact, we see ourselves as a bridge, preparing students for careers in both conventional energy and in evolving technologies that will define our next generation. In closing, regarding the Second Supplemental Recirculated Environmental Impact Report, if I say that correctly. Please vote in favor to support certification and adoption of this event. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for your continued service to our communities.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody again, we have a timer, it's here, I will point to it. I hate to interrupt speakers, but I just want to give a gentle reminder of that. Mr. Turnipseed, you're a pro, so I shouldn't have any problems with you.
No, I know how to speak in two minutes.
Okay, good.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Michael Turnipseed, I represent Kern Tax. First of all, today, I'm going to probably be different from everybody else, because I want to quantify the impacts of the last, this 2014, and the things we've gone through here at the county, and the restrictions in how they've affected the county and its ability to provide services, not only to citizens, but to take care of their employees. I know it's been very challenging to address employees' wants and needs. From the period of 2014 to 2024, annual gas production went from 12.13 million cubic feet of gas to 6.7. Barrels of oil went from 13.5 to 8 million. These reductions have cost the Kern County, by regulatory fiat in Sacramento, $363 million. And this is from the assessor's office. To make it clear, Kern County tax revenue from the oil and gas property taxes have been reduced over the years by $363 million. And that's not including 2025, or 2026, or what we're going in the future. Combine this with the effects of the recession, COVID, and reduction in oil revenues, the results have been unfathomable, how it's affected Kern County's ability to not only meet citizens' wants, but their basic needs. For the future of Kern County, please approve the requested action today, and thank you for your time and consideration of this critical issue.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. I see the front row is full, I'm assuming you're all speakers, so excellent, wonderful, eager to hear from you. Good morning, or excuse me, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman.
And welcome, Dennis.
Supervisor, staff, and members of the public. Thank you for letting me express my opinion. Born and raised in Bakersfield for over 70 years, attended local public schools with no air conditioning, lead paint everywhere, asbestos in flooring and attics, and dirt playgrounds with oil sprayed for dust control. It's a miracle I'm still here. Must have been the pure water out of, from a garden hose that kept me here. My life experiences have exposed the faults and negative decision-making by the government. Too many regulation controls our lives. I support the use of our local oil and gas resources to enhance our lifestyle and the economy of this county. We must also have local control of these other issues, including the education of our youth. Thank you.
Your name, sir, we didn't catch it at the beginning.
Oh, I forgot.
I know you.
Dennis McLean.
Thank you, Dennis. You really dated yourself, Dennis. Yes, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman, Supervisors, members in the audience. My name is Emmanuel Manny Campos, and I wear many hats in our community. I stand before you as President of Diamond in the Rough, a 501(c)(3) that works with the Westside Wreckin' Park District, a special district out in Taft. I'm also on the Board Member of Californians for Energy and Science, and also the Public Relations Director for the LULAC Council, Chapter 3272, one of the nation's oldest Latino civil rights organizations. But before all that, I am a farm worker's son, and I'm the proud father of six children that I'm raising in Taft, California. The industry that I'm here today to speak on behalf has helped pay for my, and only my, and my children's education, but that of many, and it's not just provided us jobs, but it's provided us a future. I'm here to speak in strong support of the Kern County Oil and Gas Second Supplemental Recirculated Environmental Impact Report, because it is a responsible, science-driven roadmap for sustainable development. The EIR is thorough and transparent, as you have heard today. It assesses the impacts, identifies the risks, and proposes the mitigations before approval in ensuring the development are responsible and safe. I know it's been called streamlined, but 74 binders in 10 years do not scream streamlined to me. The EIR is the bridge that keeps thousands of Kern County families employed, that supports Latinos, minorities, and justice-impacted individuals who often don't get second chances elsewhere. It is not a green light for recklessness, and it strikes at a smart balance between economic progress and environmental protection. Public participation in this process builds trust, and community voices have and have continued to be heard and will continue to be heard. The EIR complies fully with NIPA and CEQA, and it's not just smart, it's legal and responsible. It incentivizes the use of lower-emission technologies to help meet California's environmental goals. Approving the CIR avoids further years of costly lawsuits. It streamlines permitting and gives clarity to some stakeholders that need it. But let's be clear, besides the report evaluating air, water, soil impact rigorously, it also has more complete conversation about health. Many longtime oilfield workers in my own family have not experienced some of these outcomes that have been claimed here today. We also need to look further beyond that. Correlation does not imply causation. I urge everybody to look at diet, pharmaceuticals, inactivity, all the things around us that could potentially be causes for some of the things that have been talked about today. This EIR is not about drilling recklessly, it's about managing our resources wisely, today and for the future.
Mr. Campos.
The process not being done in a vacuum, it includes a lot of advocates here, and it helps a lot of people. And in closing, Kern County has always balanced environmental stewardship and economic progress, and this EIR is proof of that. Let's keep energy local, keep jobs local, keep Kern County strong for today and for the generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Campos. And thank you for not applauding the crowd, I really appreciate it. It's just so helpful. I love the passion, love the excitement.
Good afternoon. My name is William Roderick Geis, G-U-I-C-E. Thanks to the Board for letting us comment, thanks to the Kern County Planning Department for your perseverance down the years, that's awesome. I am, I represent the Executive Board of Saving California, the 2025 Recall Gavin Newsom Campaign. I'm speaking on behalf of 17,000 volunteers circulating petitions, and I'm proud to speak with you today. I'm going to share some angles you may not hear from other speakers, and talk about some impacts of overregulation to California's oil and gas industry. I submitted this packet, I'm going to go through this like you have heard it. Page 2 shows that U.S. oil production is at an all-time high. I point out three events. It happened, it began in 2010 with the horizontal drilling and fracking of shale in other states. I point out the 2014-15 oil price drop, and the COVID-19 drop in 2021. U.S. oil production is at an all-time high now of almost 13.5 million barrels, and we are the largest oil and gas-producing country in the world right now. There are 15 states, on page 3, 15 states in the U.S. produce 99% of the U.S. oil. Texas is number one, Kansas is number 15. California is currently number eight in oil production, number 14 in natural gas production, and number 12 in combined oil and gas production. Through late 2017, however, California was the third-largest oil producer in the United States, and our production began declining in the 2014-15 oil price drop, and has never come back from it. The rolled red line that starts on the left side over by 1,000 is California production. Not too many years ago, Kern County was the largest oil-producing county in the lower 48 states. Not so now. As the slides toward the end of this presentation will show, California is the only one of the 15 major oil and gas-producing states in America where oil and gas production did not recover from the 2014-15 oil price drop, or from the COVID-19 demand drop. We are the only state of the 15 producing states, largest-producing states, that did not either reduce our rate of decline or outright increase our production. I am available to meet with you guys and go through this data in more detail anytime. What I want to close with is to say that due to continuous and worsening overregulation here, combined with ban of permitting for drilling and fracking statewide, California is the only major oil and gas-producing state that has not contributed to the U.S. being the number-one producing country in the world. Our boat pulled into port, but we did not take it.
You got to wrap it up, sir.
Yes, sir. Kern County in particular has not benefited from the revenue left in the ground, our economy is suffering, communities have shrunk, people and companies have left, revenue from critical services has been lost, we have a massive budget deficit, cost of living here is among the highest in America.
Mr. Geis.
Yes, thank you. How do we look nationally? We don't look good. I urge the Board to please approve this ordinance, and get us back to drilling and on a path to progress, and serve as a good example for the rest of California. Thank you so much.
Well done, thank you. But you pushed it on time.
What's that?
You pushed it on time. We forgive you.
My name is Justin Morgan. I'm here to express my strong support for Kern County's oil industry, and to urge you to continue supporting local oil production as a critical part of our economy and energy security. As a certified journeyman, lineman, and electrician, and now supervisor in the oil and gas industry in Kern County for over 30 years, I understand how vital the oil industry is to our community. Local oil production provides thousands of good-paying jobs, contributes billions to our local economy, and supports essential services like schools, roads, public safety, and my family. My family has deep roots in the Kern County oil industry, specifically in the electrical field. My dad worked over 40 years in the industry. These jobs have supported my family for two generations so far. In my 30 years working in the oilfield as a lineman and electrician, I have worked in multiple oilfields all over California, and watched the oil companies develop a culture of safety to their workers and for the natural habitat and surrounding environment. We learn about endangered species and plants, how to produce energy while protecting the environment. Our community has long relied on the oil industry as a cornerstone of our economy, and we cannot afford to let outside forces jeopardize these local jobs or our energy security. The small towns that once thrived from the revenues of the oilfield, small businesses, are now becoming ghost towns as the industry is being halted. Supporting local oil production ensures that we are not dependent on imported oil or energy sources that may not meet our state's unique needs. Local oil provides stability and reliability to power our homes, businesses, and infrastructure. Thank you for supporting the Kern County oil and gas industry, my neighbors, and my family. Please vote yes on the Kern County oil and gas SSR EIR. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Who's next? Please come forward. Eager to hear from you, and thank you for being on the front row, it's so helpful. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, the Board of Supervisors, good afternoon, everyone here. My name is Zachary Connolly, and I am currently a lineman apprentice for an electrical company called Quantum Industries. I work for Sentinel Peak Resources out in the Taft and McKittrick area. Before this, I was a truck driver for the Army National Guard, and now I wanted to settle down, so I got out, and this is what I wanted to do.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. So, my boss, he gave me a shot after I let him know that I wanted to be a lineman, and so now here I am. This has given me a chance to support my wife, my son, and our daughter that is on the way, so it's been, it's been a great time. But the oil industry in Kern County is very strong, and it creates tens of thousands of jobs. It allows men and women to support their families, and including myself. The continuation of the oil and gas industry will not only create more jobs to allow people to continue to provide for their family, but it will also give Kern County a thriving economy. Allowing us to continue to drill will just better us as a state. And oil and gas is a vital part of everyday life, and it's not going to go anywhere anytime soon, so I urge you guys to support this ordinance that is in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Zachary. Best of luck with your new baby.
Thank you.
Peters has a six-month-old baby. You know, we celebrate that in Kern County.
Hope you're not big on sleep.
Hope you're not big. No biggie, just sleep.
My name is Alan Gibson, and I'm a California State Certified Electrician, and I've been working in the oil industry for 35 years. I was born in Taft, California. My dad worked in the oil industry for over 35 years. I have two sons that went to trade school here, and they also got certified, and they also work in the oil industry. And when people ask me, I have friends ask, can you get my kid a job? I can not only get your kid a job, I can get your kid a career, right? They can come right to work in the oilfields. When they come to work in the oilfields, we can send them right to trade school, and they develop a career, and it's great. You know, since I've been in the oil industry, we learn about environmental impact, we learn about safety, keeping each other safe out there, working together. I don't see the big, bad oil industry that they talk about, it's a family. Every time around Christmas time, we're standing there, and the oil companies donate toys, Toys for Tots, and I just, I hope that you'll support this ordinance, it's very important to us and our families. I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who's next? Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Tracy Richardson, from the Office of Senator Shannen Grove. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, Laura Lai, and County staff for all the time and commitment to this matter that you have taken and that you continue to take every year. I'm here to convey comments on behalf of Senator Grove. Kern County plays a vital role empowering California, and our ability to permit local oil and gas production is critical to our energy security, economic strength, and workforce stability. Senator Grove strongly supports Kern County oil industry, and it is absolutely critical that our county supervisors re-implement this important permitting structure so we can unleash Kern County's energy once again. Tapping into Kern's resources means protecting good-paying jobs, reducing our resilience on foreign oil, and ensuring California has a reliable and affordable energy supply. Thank you for your time today, and your time on this project.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. And thank you to the Senator.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Supervisors.
Welcome, Brian.
My name is Brian Holt, B-R-I-A-N-H-O-L-T. I stand here before you, representing over 1,200 Kern County electricians and their families. I stand here before you representing over 1,200 Kern County electricians and their families. And on behalf of those 1,200 Kern County families, we stand in support of the adoption of this ordinance. I want to thank Director Oviat and her staff for the countless hours of work that they've done on the environmental side. Obviously, I can't speak much to that. We're going to hear a lot today on the economic benefits, so I'm not going to really repeat much of that, although we do stand by that and emphasize that. But what I would like to offer is the training opportunities that these jobs afford the Kern County youth. Happy to report that our apprenticeship has grown to over 350 Kern County youth that's in there now. Every B.C. semester, 50 of them turn out to become journeymen, and we got another 50, anywhere from 50 to 100 coming in as first-years. That happens every six months. And that's a big deal, right? These are careers. These are family sustaining, mortgage-paying wages with retirement and healthcare benefits. So, again, stand here in full support of passing the ordinance, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Appreciate all that you do for families in Kern County. It is stunning and in perpetuity, your contributions and investments, Mr. Holt. I appreciate you. Sir, welcome, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Laura Lai. My name is Dave Nor. I'm currently the mayor of the city of Taft. I also serve on the Board of Directors for America's Rural Energy Coalition. I stand here, and I try to think, what's a little bit different about the last time we talked about this? Same faces. We're all a little bit older. I think Chris Parlay joined us now. Wasn't here last time.
He's much older than me.
Oh, he's okay.
For the record.
The need for hydrocarbons, the need for our industry in Kern County and in the state of California has not changed. As a matter of fact, if you look at what's going on globally, energy security is on the forefront right now. The inverse of that, energy insecurity which causes energy poverty, is something that we already experience in Kern County. We have some new people who got elected. We have a new Energy Secretary. His name is Chris Wright. Brilliant young man who's got a lot of background and a lot of schooling when it comes to all things energy-related. Chris Wright, in his first secretarial order, reminded us that we're going to see a renaissance of American energy dominance. He sees the need. We know the need is there. He also reminded us that there's no such thing as a just transition. There never has been a just transition. It is just, as in simply, a continuous integration of emerging energy sources, more legacy energy sources, and efficiencies for all uses of energy which comes about from research. And he also reminds us that there's 8 billion people on the planet today. 1 billion out of the 8 billion are fortunate enough to live a life supported by ready access to abundant, affordable energy. Only 1 out of 8. And he says the 0 at 50 goal is not attainable. It's kind of baloney, and it's really inconsequential. He says zero energy poverty at 50 is something far more important to this globe. We can do this thing, and he knows that. There's so many things to talk about. You're going to hear from the rest of them. I just want you to know that I support this in its entirety. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this by staff, and I'm behind it. After all, the only thing that is in this decision for the people of Kern County is everything. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Who's next here? Please come forward. Please state your name for the record. I'll point your attention to the clock up here. It tells you where you're at.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
I would like to say this in Spanish. Is that okay?
Of course. Thank you for that.
Dear County Board Supervisor, mi nombre es Osvaldo Lopez, y vengo a expresar fuertemente el apoyo por la aceite de Kern County Industry. Y me urge que continúan apoyando localmente nuestra producción de aceite como parte crítica a la economía y seguridad de nuestra energía. Soy un journeyman certificado por el Estado de California. He trabajado en la industria del aceite por veintitantos años, 26 años. Al igual que he sido o soy ciudadano naturalizado por los mismos años, pues he trabajado por 25 años en la industria del aceite que pues ha soportado nuestra familia. Y entiendo lo vital que es el aceite en nuestra comunidad. Nuestro aceite local provee a miles de buenos trabajos bien pagados y que contribuye con billones de dólares en nuestra economía local. Y al igual que eso apoya servicios esenciales como las escuelas, carreteras, seguridad pública, y a mi familia. Nuestra comunidad ha tenido gran confianza en la industria del aceite como una roca de soporte en nuestra economía. No podemos permitir que personas o fuerzas de fuera geopar dicen nuestros trabajos locales y nuestra energía segura. Apoyando local nuestra producción asegura que no dependeremos de aceite importado o energías de fuera que llenen nuestras necesidades únicas. Gracias por soportar nuestro aceite y gas, la industria del gas, que ha ayudado no solo a mi familia, a nuestros vecinos. Y los, por favor, apoyen así al aceite y gas de SSR EIR. Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Can we add? That was a lot to translate. But, oh, fabulous, wow. Sir, we just need a minute. I'm so sorry, because we're going to do some translation for that. I'm so sorry. We'll get to you in just a sec. Thank you. I thank you for your statement. I think the crowd picked up on community, family, you know, support. Those are the things that came across very clear. But it would be nice to hear the full interpretation.
Thank you. So, dear Kern County Board of Supervisors, my name is Osvaldo Lopez, and I am writing to you to express my strong support for Kern County's oil industry and to urge you to continue supporting local oil production as a critical part of our economy and energy security. As a certified journeyman electrician in the oil and gas industry in Kern County for over 25 years and a naturalized citizen, I understand how vital the oil and industry is to our community. Local oil production provides thousands of good-paying jobs, contributes billions to our local economy, and supports essential services like schools, roads, public safety, and it also supports my family. Our community has long relied in the oil industry and as a cornerstone of our economy. We cannot afford to let outside forces jeopardize these local jobs or our energy security. Supporting local oil production ensures that we are not dependent on imported oil or energy sources that may not meet our state's unique needs. Local oil provides stability and reliability to power our homes, businesses, and infrastructure. Thank you for supporting Kern County's oil and gas industry, my neighbors and family. Please vote yes on Kern County's oil and gas SSR EIR. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Osvaldo Lopez.
Thank you. I really appreciate your assistance there in helping us get the full picture of that presentation. Who's next? Please come forward. State your name for the record. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hello. I would like to do my speech in Spanish if it's possible.
Please.
Good day. My name is Leslie Torres. I grew up in Mexico, and I am a chemical engineer. And I received my degree in Mexico to be able to become, to have a mastery in oil in the United Kingdom. A few years ago, I immigrated to the United States, and I formed a family, and I'm currently working as a well-engineer with CRC. CRC is very proud about our work because we ensure to do it in an ethic way and secure for all. We firmly believe that it is possible to produce energy in a very responsible way, taking care of the people as well as our environment. We produce energy that is not only necessary, but we do it in a way that is secure and abiding by the strictest regulations. I'm very proud that these regulations exist because I have seen with my own eyes in other countries that they are not taking care of the environment or they do not pay the same attention to how energy is produced. But we do care. We do care about the environment and also about our communities. Personally, I am involved to ensure that the company continues to make sure that the regulations are followed as it is expected. My job on a daily basis is to guarantee that wells are committed to abiding by the highest standards of technical and also the norms established because we understand that the trust of the community is gained through actions. CRC is a pioneer and a visionary in the future of the production of energy in Kern County. We are committed to innovative solutions such as carbon capture and energy efficiency as well as sustainable development. I am very proud to be a part of the team that is not only pushing forward the local economy, but that is also leading with integrity towards a better future, a better energetic future. It is because of this reason that I insist respectfully that you approve the second supplemental EIR that is recirculated and the second supplemental recirculated environmental impact report.
Thank you so very much. Can I get a quick show of hands on how many speakers we have left? Can I just get a sense? Okay, we're going to be here a while. It's all right. Get your coffee, stretch your legs. Here we are. It's all so important, too, really. We have a little bit of rustling right now. Just, Janelle, one moment. I don't want you to be... Okay, very good little seventh-inning stretch. We're still here. We're still moving. Very good. You all right, Jeff?
Stretching.
All right. You're good. You're good.
Director Oviat, if we shortened the abbreviation up for this, we could probably cut about 10 of those books out and probably save us an hour.
Okay, so nice to see you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board, Director Oviat, and staff. Thank you so much. I'm Janelle Capra, President and CEO of the Greater Bakersfield Chamber. This year, we're celebrating 105 years as a chamber, and many of our oil industry partners in this room have been there since day one. So, I won't repeat what's been said about the economic impact or what's needed for our communities. I will share personally what I've seen since being a part of this community since 1989, going to school here, going to college, seeing my friends and family in the industry, seeing contributions, significant contributions made to our nonprofits, and seeing a way forward for our communities to thrive. So, what I ask today, and I'll give us all back some time, is to have one thought. What if this decision today does change the trajectory of our oil and gas industry in Kern County? And what if that makes a difference for us to be the leader in Kern County, in our nation, in our world? So, I ask today, on behalf of the Chamber, on behalf of Kern Citizens for Energy and our other coalitions represented in letters that have been submitted to the Board of Supervisors, please vote yes on Kern County oil and gas SSR EIR. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and all your hard work here. Please, come forward. Let's move. Welcome. Welcome and good afternoon.
My name is Jared Whitby, and I strongly support maintaining and expanding Kern County's oil and gas industry. For nearly two decades, I have built my career here. First, as a shop hand with McKee Electric, working my way up to my current position as electrical supervisor at Quantum Industries in the Kern River Oil Field. The industry has provided not only employment, but also long-term career stability, the ability to provide for my family. Kern County's oil and gas sustains thousands of well-paying local jobs across multiple skill levels and educational backgrounds, contributes significantly to our economies such as schools, roads, and public safety, utilizes vast local natural resources, including major fields like Kern River and Elk Hills, reducing reliance on imported oil and energy. When oil permitting and drilling stopped, many local families, like mine, suffered direct economic impacts. My dad, Reuben, and our family once owned and operated an oil-rig drilling moving company, and that, with the permits and the oil rigs, vanished. Thousands of Kern County families were affected with widespread job loss. Please vote yes on the Kern County oil and gas SSR EIR reauthorizing local permitting. Oil production remains within our control. Kern Oil continues providing essential revenue for our community. We preserve our ability to offer good jobs to our community today and into the future. Thank you for supporting Kern County's oil and gas industry, our families, our schools, and our energy future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you so much for coming up quickly. Good afternoon and welcome, sir.
Thank you. I find myself asking...
Your name, sir?
Oh, sorry. My name is Andrew Hastings. I found myself asking, what does oil and gas mean to me? Oil and gas has been the foundation of my home. If it wasn't for oil and gas, my parents wouldn't have met. They were able to put both my younger sisters through college. One's a petroleum engineer and another is a mechanical engineer. After spending half a lifetime coming up through the trades, I recently graduated, spring 2025, as electrical engineer as well. Every job I've ever worked has been tied to the oil field in one way or another, and the same is true for my family. So, I'm thankful for this opportunity to stand up for the industry that's been so good to my community and has been there for my family for generations. I hope oil and gas will continue to have a strong presence in Kern County and that the current and future families of this community will have the same opportunities as mine. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Andrew. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. My name's Kristin Watson. I serve as the Chief of Staff to the President and interim Vice President and CFO at Cal State Bakersfield. I appreciate the opportunity to offer remarks today in support of certifying the second supplemental recirculated environmental impact report and the effort to re-implement the Kern County oil and gas ordinance. At CSUB, we are deeply committed to serving as an engine for...
Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County. Because I have seen with my own eyes the impact of the energy industry in Kern County.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Welcome. Richard Chapman, President and CEO of the Kern Economic Development Corporation. And our mission and overarching goal is to advance employment opportunities as well as promote the economic well-being of Kern County. We represent a broad coalition of business, government, and education leaders working to promote Kern County's boundless opportunities for business. We all know that the oil and gas industry is the largest economic leg of the stool. We have many legs of the stool. We are a very diverse economy, but the oil and gas industry is about $20 billion a year. High-paying jobs, I'm not sure if it was stated, the average oil and gas job is 51% higher salary than all jobs in our economy. And then the multiplier effect, economic development, people like to talk about multipliers. One job in the field, there's two other jobs in our community. The restaurants, other services are supported by one job. So we have to understand that if one job is eliminated, that means three jobs. It's really critical, as has been talked about, how this has impacted our region's economy. And these are STEM jobs that create upward mobility opportunities. In fact, many years ago, we were rated top in the country for upward mobility. And that means moving from the bottom 20% to the top 20% income level in one generation. That was Kern County, I believe it was National Bureau of Economic Research at Harvard University, showing that it was possible with a high school degree or a two-year degree or advanced degree to move forward. And finally, the fiscal, as was talked about by Mr. Turnipseed, about 17 of the top 20 taxpayers are energy companies. So that's a real loss if we lose that, again, part of our economy, integral part. We commend the county and the industry for engaging in a collaborative, transparent process, best practices. And as I said at Planning Commission, we have the strictest regulations in the world to drill Kern County. So why wouldn't we drill, right? Why are we importing 77% as a state of our oil? Doesn't make sense to me, but I'm just an economic developer. And the framework ensures environmental responsibility, we talked about that. Economic stability, that's the other key. It is a balanced and forward-looking approach. And it's essential in terms of the energy independence, I talked about, economic security, and sustainable future for Kern County. Right? Economic development is capital investment, jobs, as well as tax revenue. And the industry does that in spades. So we respectfully request that you approve the ordinance as well as the supplemental EIR. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Shalonda Davis-Layton. I'm a wife, a mother, and a 16-year breast cancer survivor. Born and raised right here in East Bakersfield. I've been deeply involved in my local community since childhood. I've had the privilege of working at Chevron for the last 18 years as a facilities engineer, ensuring safe, reliable facilities to make sure that our community continues to be safe. This career has enabled me to send my one and only daughter, Sarah, to UC Irvine. She'll be graduating next spring. Growing up here in Kern County, I was embraced by supportive neighbors who became my family. In this community, I raised my daughter, Sarah, instilling values of hard work, resilience, and giving back. As the president and founder of a local nonprofit, Charmed and Chosen, I worked to improve the lives of diverse youth and families across Kern County, promoting energy education and careers in STEM. Over the past 18 years, I've seen the energy industry's positive impact on our community, providing livelihoods to many families and fostering growth. However, current permitting challenges within our oil industry are having a direct impact on many families. Increased food prices, gasoline taxes, increased homeless populations. Many cannot even afford to buy a house or even rent one, for that matter, leading to higher unemployment and crime rates. Lives are being disrupted, which can lead to increased mental health challenges as well. Chevron's investment fuels dreams, creates bonds, and overcomes challenges. Integral to our community's fabric, I'm honored to have been a part of this progress. Today, I humbly request the board to certify the second supplemental recirculated environmental impact report. This certification is crucial as it reflects our commitment to our community, our values, and our promise to foster a sustainable future for our community, families, and future generations. Thank you for your time. Together with unity in this community, together we win.
Thank you, ma'am. Congrats on your daughter.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dulce Hernandez. I was born and raised here in Bakersfield, California, and I graduated from South High School. I went off to study mechanical engineering and obtained a degree from Fresno State University. After college graduation, I started my career with Chevron and just completed 19 years of service this month of June. Since then, I have been committed to providing affordable energy while protecting the environment. Kern County's oil and gas industry provides many jobs and opportunities for our community members. As it did for me, I was able to complete an internship every summer of my college career. Chevron continues to play an important role in supporting the communities where we operate through youth leadership and development programs, STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math education, and economic development. We believe our success is linked to the success of our people and our communities. It has provided me the opportunity to learn, grow, and pay it forward. I actively volunteer for events and programs that promote STEM disciplines among young students. I am currently a member of Bakersfield College Mesa Board and a founding member of Introducing Girl to Engineering, which focuses on preparing the next generation to tackle the challenges of the future. This is made possible with the industry's economic support in funding these programs, and I take pride in being a part of it. I enjoy giving back to the schools and communities where we operate because I was once that student. As a resident of Bakersfield, California, raising two young daughters, ages 10 and 11, I am passionate about providing reliable, affordable, and sustainable energy to Californians. And I would like to ask for the board to certify the SSR EIR. Thank you for your time.
South High.
South High.
You're still a rebel.
I am always a rebel.
I love it. Ms. Hernandez, is your first name again? I didn't catch it.
Dulce. D-U-L-C-E.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations on all of your success. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Jaclyn Aguilar, and I'm here on behalf of Kern Citizens for Energy and our more than 12,000 members. KC was founded to support local energy production and all of the working men and women in this industry. Kern Citizens for Energy represents thousands of Kern County citizens as well as five incorporated cities, 10 chambers of commerce, hundreds of small businesses, and a cross-section of representatives from all healthcare, education, nonprofit, and public safety organizations here in Kern. KC supports the second supplemental recirculated environmental impact report for Kern County oil and gas ordinance. The reality is that all Californians depend on Kern County's oil and gas industry. The industry provides the necessities that we use on a daily basis. Given the high conception of petroleum products, we continue to believe that they should be produced locally by the citizens of Kern County. The oil and gas industry in Kern provides thousands of local jobs and generates millions of dollars in revenue to the county. Our community is happier, it's safer, it's healthier when we have access to abundant and affordable energy. Supporting this detailed review and updating the permit process allows us to produce these resources while meeting the world's strictest environmental and safety standards. The majority of Kern County citizens support all of the incredible energy, the industry. And we want to say thank you to Ms. Oviat, along with the Kern County staff, for your expertise and professionalism throughout this process, ensuring that we continue to feed and empower Kern County. Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Julian Romero, Julian Romero, and I'm the SJV Operations Advisor for Chevron. I'm originally from Delano, graduated from Delano High School when Delano High School was the only high school in Delano. And I have worked for Chevron for 20 years. I was raised in a family of nine, and today I'm helping my wife raise a family of five, three children, my wife and I. The oil and gas industry gave my family a path out of poverty. My relatives, Eddie, Santos, Ryan, all are part of the story. This industry didn't just give us jobs, it gave us dignity, stability, and a future. It also gave me the opportunity to pursue higher education. I earned degrees in computer science and software engineering. And now I'm able to support my children's education and help them dream even bigger. But this industry does more than just support families, it uplifts communities. Through programs like ChemKeep and other programs for school, school, community partnerships, it helps high schoolers explore science, build confidence, and stay on track. It also leads in environmental stewardship. From emissions monitoring to emissions training and spill prevention, we are producing some of the cleanest oil in the world right here in Kern County. Please certify SSR EIR. Let families like mine and communities like ours continue to thrive and grow and give back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Tony Morisi, and I'm here today to give support to the project. I come to you today as a small business owner, a father, and a supporter of the oil-filled industries. I'm also here to give a voice to the employees that cannot make it here, as you heard today. Lots of employees rely and can live a good life off of the oil-filled industry. Kern County has one of the largest oilfield platforms in California. I myself came from the oil-filled companies. Now I'm a small business owner. We do e-waste recycling, which does have nothing to do with the oil fields, but I'm here to give support. And we can talk about the pros and cons, about the negative, the good, the negative, the bad, the good, and the bad. I'm sorry, I have to decipher my notes here. It's all written on a piece of paper, just did it right away. So I've lived in Kern County for 43 years. I've seen this place grow from Rosedale, when there was nothing there but the sheep herd, that's now the Walmart shopping center, to what it is now. We can also say the harmful effects of cell phone towers, for instance. There are studies that are saying that the side effects, negative side effects, could be harmful to reproduction for the birds. And so there's pros and cons in everything in our life. We just got to do what's good for Kern County and what's good for our community and what's good for the employees and what makes this economy strive, both on the macro and on the micro level. 43% of e-waste is being thrown away in the garbage cans, but we don't talk about that. And that's not from the commercial side, but that's from the residential side, where toxics, lithium batteries can be thrown away. Like I said, there's pros and cons in everything in all choices that we make. And I'm here just to support the oil-filled companies. And I'd like to give a shout out to Trends for doing awesome work and awesome job that they do.
Thank you so much, sir. Hello, ma'am. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Jansen, and I am speaking today on behalf of the Bakersfield Association of Realtors and the 2,700 members that we represent. Kern County's oil and gas industry fuels more than just our energy grid. It fuels homeownership, small business growth, and the public services that make neighborhoods thrive. The SSR EIR is a blueprint for responsible energy development that protects both our environment and our economic foundation. We urge you to vote yes today for Kern County's oil and gas SSR EIR. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think you got the record on time. Well done. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'll try to be fast as well. My name is George Norton. That's G-E-O-R-G-E-N-O-R-T-O-N. My degree is in engineering, and it's not even petroleum engineering, but in mechanical engineering. As engineering is founded in science and math, engineers typically believe in things that we can prove or we can show. I've lived in six states and seen firsthand how oil and gas has developed around the United States, seeing these operations conducted safely and cleanly. I've also traveled around the world, and I would ask any of those in opposition, where have you traveled to see this done, and do you consider yourself an oil and gas expert? As I would not consider myself an environmental an environmental expert, as this is not my background nor my expertise. But what I do know is what I can see. And I have seen oil developed as a distinguished lecture firsthand in Basra, Iraq, or in herbal Iraq, where flares are larger than an entire airplane, and the only lights while flying in you can see are perfect squares lit with these torches across the acreage. I've seen it firsthand in places like Khartoum, Sudan, or Juba, South Sudan, in Africa, and many other places around the world that I've traveled to, with less-than-desirable business practices. What I can speak to is what I can see. And what I can see with my expertise in oil and gas is that we do it safer, cleaner, and better here in the United States, more than anywhere else. I believe this legislation brings us one step closer to continuing these safe and clean development practices here in the state of California, and I appreciate all the work that it takes to do that. Thus, I support this legislation and the continuing of clean and safe oil and gas development in the United States and in California. And I urge you to vote for this legislation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Real globetrotter. Welcome. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name's Karen Bissard, the USSARD. I'm a lifelong resident of Kern County. I'm also a nineteen-year employee of Kern County, so thank you, oil and gas, for helping to pay my salary. I grew up here. I used... My mom would drive us by the oil derricks. Tell me it was Disneyland. We have a city named Oildale. Bakersfield High School drillers. Oil and ag are the cornerstones of Kern County. And unless you've lived here, you don't understand that. You just get in your cars and go. You just look at the asphalt. You look at all the petroleum that's being used up north and down south. I've been here when oil's booming. I've been here when it bottomed out. Bottoming out was horrible, and it had devastating impact on everybody in Kern County because, like was previously stated, the oil industry creates jobs, not only in the oil industry, but helps support other employees throughout Kern County. Also, while Kern County has moved forward in diversity... diversity in their power supply with wind and electricity, we've also been devastated by fires that were caused by power, electric power. People have lost... we've lost vegetation, houses, human life, and whole towns due to fires. There's also been a smoke impact also. So everything that happens does have a negative impact somehow, but the oil industry has moved forward so much from when I was a child that they should be very proud of that. So please vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Nice to hear from you. Can I ask who... if we have speakers in the back that are not... have not moved down to the front? Because this front row is reserved for speakers so that we can keep things moving. Other than the first row. Can I see how many other folks want to show us how brilliant you are? Okay, got it. Please make your way down because we can really charge through this meaningfully. But, you know, be good stewards of time as well. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Director Oviot, and county staff. Thank you for your consideration today. My name is Elizabeth Stevens, S-T-E-V-E-N-S, with Common Sense Consulting, speaking on behalf of the Associated Builders and Contractors of Central California. We strongly support the second supplemental recirculated EIR related to oil and gas permitting. ABC's support is grounded in the level of safety it establishes for oil and gas industry workers. ABC represents many local contractors and employers who build and maintain Kern County's critical infrastructure. None more foundational than the oil and gas industry. As such, our organization operates a workforce development and training center just north of Bakersfield, where we train thousands of men and women who keep Kern County's oil and gas industry running. Their ability to do their jobs safety, safely, and effectively is dependent upon stable, science-based regulatory frameworks like that of the SSR EIR. Kern County's energy industry is necessary... is a necessary economic driver that saves... serves as the foundation of thousands of family-supporting careers across our region. Without a clear path forward, we risk losing both the job opportunities and the training pipelines that support them. We respectfully urge your board to approve the second supplemental EIR as it is instrumental in supporting Kern's workforce and raising safety standards both within and outside the industry. Thank you for your time, your work, and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Who is next? Come on down. Welcome. Good afternoon, sir. Nice to see you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members. Dave Demahowski with the Home Builders Association of Kern County. As our CEO of the Chamber mentioned, this is more than about jobs. The oil and gas industry, their employees and their families have affected just about every aspect of civic life in Kern County, from the California Living Museum to the Symphony and wherever you go in the volunteer and nonprofit world. It's also been good for the home building industry, and that's important. And as we all know, a home is where a job goes at night. So I'm proud to... we are proud to have signed on to the Business Coalition Letter and urge your approval of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. So succinct. That's a pro.
Hello. Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, board members.
Hello.
Proud to be here. Thank you. Mike Harvey, CEO of Five Eleven Media Group. And as a lifelong resident of Kern County, I've seen that oil is the lifeblood of this county. We all know that. We're all connected to it, whether we're directly connected to it or not. Whether directly or indirectly, this industry provides millions, if not tens of millions of dollars, to our economy, to our tax budget as a county and the city. Provides tens of thousands of jobs. And no, I haven't been directly affected. I want to talk about the ripple effects. We've been indirectly. Every single member of this county, every single member of our city is indirectly affected by what happens in the oil industry. I've... As a two-decade-long business owner, I've seen the effects that this industry and the downturns in the industry over the past several decades have had on clients of ours and businesses, their employees. And that affects the vendors as well. That affects the employees of the vendors. That affects everybody's pocketbook, and it affects our livelihoods in this county. Coming from a farming family, I've seen firsthand the effects of overregulation in our state and in our economy. And we need to remove regulation and restrictions wherever we can. And I also understand that this issue is bigger than this county. This is an issue that also is at the state level.
And global.
Amen. But we need to do everything we can to support this vital industry. I'm confident that this board, whether we see eye to eye on everything, I'm sure that we don't.
No.
But I'm confident that this board is... has the best interest of this city and this county in mind, regardless of where you stand. And I'm confident that you will support this measure, that this ordinance and the SSR EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate your acknowledgement that we're just not going to agree on... any compilation of two people are not going to agree fundamentally and honestly on anything. I don't care who you are. If you're married or in a long-term relationship, you know how true this is. And still, we manage to figure out the sweet spots that are critical to all of us. Somehow, we manage this. It's not... We don't have to agree with each other. We don't have to vacation together, although we might have to. We turn it all around. Anyway, I appreciate you saying that, sir, because that's an honest reality and how we focus and move forward in the critical matters that are just fundamental. So I appreciate that. Appreciate your remarks. Welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Alyssa Reed, and I'm the Executive Secretary of the Kern, Inyo, and Mono Counties Building and Construction Trades Council. I come today before you to speak in support of your endorsement of this SSR EIR. And just to point out and reiterate, we've heard it countless times before from previous speakers. But to reiterate to you, the jobs and the pipeline and the career path that is created through apprenticeship programs at the most elemental level of career development and career pathways. Apprenticeship programs provide an entry-level point for all of our community members to start a career that provides them the ability to support their family and live their life and enjoy their life in this community. And so it's important that we focus on some of those jobs, but also the economic benefit that our community gets out of the ripple effect of those jobs and the ripple effect of the tax economy that allows our county and our cities to be able to provide services for the disinvested communities that so many point out. And, you know, it's just... it's critical that we keep that in mind as we look at this because that's a key point in what this impact has in this decision. And so we look for your support in doing that. We thank the Planning Commission... the Planning Committee and the... for their work and their dedication to going through this. You know, the countless hours that they've spent. We have faith and trust in their work, and we ask you to do the same and support it. Thank you.
Alyssa, if you could just wait there a moment. You know, I haven't had the opportunity to really thank you, acknowledge what you do publicly, and I want to take a moment to do that because I think it's profound. You know, you and your team tirelessly, passionately, and utterly the greatest level of competence and excellence recruit people in Kern County, desperate for upward mobility, desperate for a tangible career, desperate. No one, in my opinion, does what you do. Personally, you, Alyssa, with the class after class after class, the love and TLC you give to individuals there, desperate for their American dream and working like hell to get it. And I would just love to highlight how connected in Kern County we are and how much we are looking out for each other and what's really the soul that's driving this hearing and what's palpable here today. I recall in your last class, there was a female in your cohort who was working graveyard shift and then in the morning going to the apprentice program, barely sleeping, barely eating. It was an astonishing reality. And you contacted me and said, "We can't... She can't make it till the end of the program without some gas and without some food help." And there was really no governmental source for that, and we needed it to act quickly. So you all saw earlier, Mr. Stan Ellis was here. He's going to be very upset with me because he doesn't like public recognition for this kind of stuff. But I called Stan. I said, "Stan, I want to tell you what's happening with this young lady, and she needs help." He says, "No problem. Come right over." As he always does. Such a generous, beautiful soul. Went over and got that, provided it to you. You provided it to that young lady who was able to finish and get to the bottom... to get to the finish line. I think it's extraordinary what is the spirit that underlies what's happening here in Kern County, who we really are when we're not afraid of each other and attacking each other. That is the... It's the absolute best of us. You deserve recognition for that. It's apart from today's hearing, though it is part and parcel of what it is that's important to us here in Kern County and how we operate and how we treat each other. So I want to acknowledge you for that and say thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for that recognition. And it's with support of people like you and the members of the board and this industry, you know, that has supported our program and allowed us to do the work that we do. And so that's why we stand here, you know, in support of the actions of the board and, you know, support of our industries around us.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do for so many Kern County families. Appreciate you very much. Okay, who's next?
Hello. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Oviot, and staff. My name is Amanda Frank. I'm here representing the Kern County Superintendent of Schools and Dr. John Mendebro. We have the opportunity to represent the forty-six school districts and charter schools in Kern County, serving over one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand pre-K through twelfth-grade students. We know that Kern County is currently facing a myriad of challenges, including the fact that over thirty percent of children in Kern County live in poverty. Any further loss in the single largest economic driver in our county will continue to negatively impact our youth. The petroleum industry provides funding and support to numerous school districts and programs that educate our children and provide them with tools for lifelong success. Revenues from the oil and gas industry in Kern County help to keep our schools operating and funded, which help us meet the diverse needs of students in our community. The direct financial impact on Kern County school infrastructure should be addressed. Almost fifty-nine percent of local property taxes go to school districts. So the petroleum industry is a key partner in supporting education in Kern County. During the 2018 to 2019 fiscal year, the oil and gas industry contributed one-hundred-and-three million dollars in property tax revenue that was directed to Kern County schools. This could pay the annual salary of over two thousand teachers. As a direct result of decreased production in the past six years, those property tax revenues to schools have decreased by nearly fifty percent. That's an impact of fifty million dollars annually to schools. And unfortunately, the schools on the west side are disproportionately impacted. Education and employment are the great equalizers, providing families with the keys to be successful in life. Particularly in these challenging times, it is critical that our schools have the resources to meet the diverse needs of our students. In addition to jobs and economic opportunity, our local oil and gas industry provides revenue that is essential to keeping our schools operating and funded. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your partnership. And please, as you consider adopting the SSR EIR, please remember the children.
Thank you so much. Who's next? Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, board, and good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Board, and good afternoon, ma'am, she's really hardworking. My name is Mario Salinas, that's M-A-R-I-O-S-A-L-I-N. I am with the Launa Local 220 Labors Union. I am proud to say that I am the president of our local and represent over 2,000 members. Now, I, we're here in support of this permit for this industry. The oil industry is a very important part of our economy here in Kern County, as we all know that, but not only in our, in our own county, but throughout the United States as well. Now, I grew up out in Arvin, got out of high school and moved to the big city of Bakersfield and I started my career out there in the oil fields. So, I know the importance of the oil fields and the oil industry. Now, with our, work that, that is provided by the oil industry helps us all within our own economy, our members, our members are, came from the oil industry and are also working in the oil industry as well. And with the good wages and benefits that helps drive them into the middle class. And as we know, just as, just as like the oil industry helps boom our economy here, so is the middle class that drives our economy, our society, and our country. And with that, I'd like to say thank you all for your hard work and we are here in support of this.
Thank you for everything you do, appreciate you. Come on forward, please state your name for the record and welcome.
Hello, I'm Jesse Waldowski.
I know you.
President of Kern County Firefighters Local 1301. I'm here just to support the oil and gas industry, we are intertwined. I'm a public servant, public employee, and the money generated from oil and gas directly affects my members and my paycheck. So, I'm very thankful for that and I'm here to support them. Just want to talk a little bit, give a little perspective from a fireman. I do not, I am not an environmental impact expert for oil and gas, but as a fireman, one of my jobs in East Kern, I work in Tatchby, Golden Hills, is to go around and do hazard reduction on homes. And just so everyone's aware, you only have to clear 100 feet from your house to cut grass, so when fire and smoke bears down on your house, you have clearance. So, 100 feet, 3200 feet, I don't know which is better, but that's my perspective. Solar tax revenue has been a frustration for me for a few years now. It's, it doesn't seem right to me, I feel like we can do, we can have both sides having impact, having revenue, oil and gas and solar and wind. Environmental impact, last year in Rosemont, we chased fires from solar fields, we chased fires from windmills. Windmills are powered by oil, they have a big motor, when they go bad, they throw their blades and start fires. So, that's a real thing in my life as a fireman. Also, batteries and lithium, they have a huge impact on the environment. I would highly advise you, if you ever come across a lithium fire on a vehicle, get away as fast as possible. So, with this, thank you so much, I encourage you to please vote yes on the SSR EIR.
Thank you, Jess. Thank you for being here. Welcome.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon and thank you for having us, the Board. Ms. Oviat, thank you so much. Jack Labers, L-A-V-E-R-S, I am a Director for the Kern County Cattlemen's Association. I am the current Chair for the California Cattlemen's Association's Political Action Committee, as well as the California Cattlemen's Association's Tax and Credit Committee, as well as an appointee to, by the Secretary of Agriculture, to the California Department of Food and Ags Animal Health Advisory Task Force.
You're busy, Jack.
I like meetings. We're living in strange times. A socialist just won the Democratic nomination for Mayor in New York City, a wealthy elitist preaching about taxing the rich to fund programs that have never worked, and like too many on the far left, he carries a history of antisemitism. It's always the same, punish success, destroy the industries that fund their dreams and hope someone else will foot their bill. But socialism doesn't work, it never has. What does work? Capitalism. And nothing is more capitalistic than the oil industry and agriculture. While farming currently is being cut in half, we're here fighting to preserve one of the last economic drivers, the oil industry. Governor Newsom may pretend to oppose it, but behind closed doors, he's begging refineries not to leave because he knows. As goes Kern County, goes the rest of the state of California. Oil means jobs, real jobs. I've seen people turn their lives around, addiction, prison, poverty, only to rise through hard work in the oil fields and make six-figure incomes. That's opportunity. That's dignity. That's something worth protecting. And those so-called rich oil guys, they give back to our communities. Brad Peters, Leslie Knox, the owner of Allied Industrial Services, their gracious donations helped build the AIS Cancer Center, where here in Kern County, 70% of all women who are diagnosed with breast cancer go to receive treatment. They support our schools, our charities, our community. So, to those who oppose this industry, many of you living on government paychecks or benefits, be careful what you wish for. If oil leaves, the foundation crumbles, there's no tax base, no small businesses, and no future without it. I stand with Kern County's oil industry and the working families it supports. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Who's next? Welcome, good afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Chair and, and to the Board, thank you very much. Jack Labers and I actually have vacation together and are good friends. If you've read our text messages, you know we don't agree on lots of things.
I'll bet, I'm not surprised by that.
But, here we are. And I mention that because as you mentioned, Madam Chair, the best of us is when we can find common ground. And I think that what you're hearing from so many of the folks here, I stand here, Kiyoshi Tamoto, by the way, Partnership Executive with Venice Health and also with the Blue Zones Project, is finding common ground and the great work that we're able to do at the healthcare industry. We, you know, have the ability to take care of people and keep people healthy, that's the goal. And people are healthy when they have healthcare and they have access to health insurance, which the oil industry so well provides, not only good-paying jobs, but jobs that have healthcare covered and that people are able to take care of things before it becomes, as Jack mentioned, breast cancer that's at stage four. But the other thing I want to mention is, our friends over at Chevron have helped fund a mobile unit that goes out and provides free care at events for kids. We partnered with CRC, as I mentioned, on projects like the Blue Zones Project, we're out in the community and trying to improve things. So, the, the impact of the oil industry goes far beyond not only the work that they do, but also the community impact, and I think you've heard a lot from other folks who have supported that. And so, we are in support of them today and their work that they do in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. Please come forward, state your name for the record, welcome, good afternoon.
Hello, my name is Brian Garcia, B-R-I-A-N. I work for Well Analysis Corporation and I've been in the oil fields for 15 years. Oil powers our world, its benefits are undeniable, it fuels our homes, businesses, and industries, driving progress and prosperity. Here in the United States, we extract oil using the safest, cleanest methods on the planet. Advanced technologies like precision drilling and enhanced monitoring minimize environmental impact, setting a global standard for responsibility. Our rigorous regulations and cutting-edge practices ensure we protect our land and air while meeting energy demands. Some claim oil causes health issues like asthma or heart disease and a list of other issues. If all of this is true, why am I or others in this room not dead yet? Why is it that it's typically folks that don't work in our industry that always seems to be the ones who have health issues that quote-unquote "come from oil"? Meanwhile, guys and gals like me stand over these wells daily for years on end with no health issues tied directly to our jobs. The opposition thinks they're the only ones that care about themselves and their families or others, claiming our hard work causes death, claiming we are poking fun or calling names. It seems like when a logical argument can no longer be had, our character is attacked. That representation of our industry is untrue. Beyond energy, oil creates opportunity. The industry supports millions of jobs, good-paying, stable jobs for hard-working Americans, as well as giving opportunities to veterans like myself. The company I work for is a family-owned business and has been fortunate to be in operation for the last 36 years, providing opportunity for countless families throughout this timeframe. From rig, from rig workers to engineers, these roles strengthen our communities, expanding domestic production will create even more jobs, boosting local economies and giving families a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your service, Mr. Garcia. Thank you so much. So nice to see you're doing so well.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chairwoman and Member of the Board. My name is Vivian and I am the President of the Kern County Agent Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Leadership, I'm a member of the Leadership Committee of Kern Citizens for Energy. As, it's no surprise, oil and gas are the top contributors to Kern's local economy, GDP, and tax revenue, which ensures high-paying jobs, it funds our local public safety and our infrastructure, and huge, huge philanthropic partners for all of our nonprofits. Especially in light of recent events, we know that our county, our state, and then our countries, energy security is pivotal importance. I urge that you support this SSR EIR to ensure that Kern County remains happy, healthy, and strong. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. Who's next?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Stacy Urbina, U-R-B-I-N-A. I have a long familial history in Kern County. My grandparents, great-grandparents came over from Oklahoma during the Dust Bowl era. On the other side of the county, my grandfather owned a Chevron gas station for 40-plus years and I despised it. I hated that gas station. I'm going to take this in a different direction now. I'm a social activist, I worked for the Cesar Chavez Foundation, the United Farm Workers, with Paul and Arturo. I'm an environmentalist, I'm a vegan, I'm a raw vegan chef, passionate about the earth and all life on it, but I'm also the Executive Assistant to the CEO of Berry Corporation. And I have been for many years. It's not the evil entity I had made it out to be, but it's people who care, work hard to be stronger together, and want to do the right thing. Environmental and social activists can pick and choose, but they can't drive cars and fly then condemn oil. And this is an industry that we need. So, now, this is about working together to keep energy flowing until there's a better way. And eventually, there will be. Environmental and social activism means more than just Kern County. I wish we could all see that a little bit clearer on the activism side, because people suffer, the environment's destroyed when oil is produced in conditions that are not held to the standards of California and Kern County. And what we don't allow here is allowed in other places, and safety and health are coming first, especially at Berry and the other oil producers in the county. Kern County production is held to the strictest regulatory standards in the world. We keep money here in Kern and California, we provide living wage for jobs, where solar and wind do not. I live in Tatchby, so I know firsthand from family and friends that cannot make a living wage there. We provide jobs for everyone, from high school grads to advanced degree. We generate tax revenue for social services, emergency services, law enforcement, my dad was a police officer, actually a state trooper. School programs, my son was in a bunch of autism programs, those were all funded by the county. We can work together to find a better way, and one day there will be, but until that, we have to work together. And that's where I came in, is I wanted to see the other side. We come together, we do this together, we find a better way. We're asking you to do the right thing for the people of Kern, for this industry, and for those in California, the people who are employed and have an opportunity for the next generation, the children of our, our children, those oil workers, and they may be the ones who find a better way, but until then, we need oil. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Please state your name for the record. I think we're, I think we're, can I, can I see who's left? One, two, can you come on down if you're back there, because we have empty space here in the front? Looks like we're down to the wire. Okay, no pressure, I promise.
No, no.
And you've been so patient, so thank you.
So, my name's Lonnie Kerley, K-E-R-L-E-Y. Want to thank county staff and the supervisors for all this. You know, I'm here as a representative of, of a very small independent oil company called Premier Resource Management, but I'm also here as a Kern County citizen. I've moved here with my parents in 1969, so I, I remember the days we had the serious fog, the serious smog, but it wasn't necessarily oil and gas-related, it, it is humanity-related. You know, that's kind of the thing I want to get at. The, I lived here since 69, I've seen Kern County grow from a small town of, what, we had seven high schools back in the 70s?
Wow.
You know, and I'm a West High grad, so yeah, West High.
Woo!
You know, but I know the North High people, I know, know Foothill, Highland, South, you know, and it, you know, we were a community. And, and the, the oil industry has supported my life and my grandparents, my dad's life, grandparents. I'm fourth-generation oil field and I'm proud of it. You know, my boys, I've raised two boys in California, neither one of them went into the oil industry. Why? They, they chose different things. But that's, that's how, how you go. You know, I married my wife, I married an Italian farmer's daughter, you know, so we are intimate with Kern County. It was either farming or oil and gas for a long time. And that, her family helped kind of develop the county, or the, the Bakersfield. Sometimes, I think people get confused between urban development and oil and gas development. And all this talk about smog and emissions and global inter, you know, global warming, you know, it's not just oil and gas, there might be a byproduct of it, or, you know, but really, it's humanity and, and our urban growth in Kern County. You look at what's happened here in Kern County and the town has gotten very large and that's just, that's just reality of it. So, I'm here to show my support for you guys, the, the Board, and support of the SSR EIR, SRO, whatever. So, thank you very much.
Fourth generation. Welcome.
Yeah, my name's Brett Cooper, I'm a small independent oil producer here in Kern County, got interest in the Round Mountain field. I'm for anything that supports oil and gas, but as you know, we're at war with the state of California and we're going to have to treat it as a war. This can no longer come to the middle, get along, they've made it clear, they want zero production in Kern County. So, all you guys that are wanting in the oil and gas industry to make a career of it, remember that. California has declared war on Kern County oil. The state has declared war. Your governor has said he wants to go to zero production. He has told CARB to find a way to do that by 2045. Got news for you, they're already doing it to us with our underground injection control. They're already doing it to us with fines to get assessments against us so they do not have to give us permits to operate. They have shut in production in this county drastically with just the Clean Air and the Clean Water Act. It's going to continue. I heard a guy here talking about the ranching. You cannot believe the amount of cattle grau, ground that has come out of production due to not having the access to the water. Big fire out at CRC the other day, they used to let sheep graze out there. I'm telling you, this Board of Supervisors, this county has got to fire a firm and we have to sue Newsom on the conspiracy that he's committed by authorizing his agencies to do things outside of the law. The time to come together with the state or working with the state is done. It's not going to work. Suing is our only option, it has to be done. Without it, I promise you, I'm 55, 20 years from now, there'll be no oil production in this county. And it's coming a hell of a lot faster than you think it is. Thank you.
Mr. Cooper, could you tell us how you really feel?
If I did, the FBI would probably take me.
Oh, slow down. Thank you, sir, thank you. Who else? Do we have other speakers? If so, now is the time, please come down, this is the end of the public hearing, I'm about to close it. So, please come down and have your thoughts be known if you are speaking in support of the industry, we're about to close the public hearing. Looks like we have a final speaker. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hi. I apologize, I was making notes.
No apology.
My name is Bridget, B-R-I-D-G-E-T, Beard, B-E-A-R-D. I live in Keene, which is in District 2, just outside of Tatchby. I moved there in 1982 when I was an employee of a small oil and gas producer. I was transferred from Denver and, to the Bakersfield office, but I chose Keene. I worked for that company until 1987, when the company went bankrupt essentially and sold all their assets. And then I became a contractor, independent contractor doing land work. Land work includes oil and gas lease and right-of-way acquisition, title determining who owns the surface, well, we call it the fee, but most laymen say the surface as well as the mineral owners. Dealing with landowners, with problems, et cetera, there are many, many aspects. We also often deal with governmental agencies and regulatory bodies. I, I'm going to try to be really quick. I want to rebut a few things that were said earlier. We have bad air in this county, yes, but it's not all due to the oil and gas industry. As the fires in Northern California have demonstrated, much of what happens in Northern California comes to Kern County. And...
And the globe.
There's considerable traffic, not only on the major freeways, but train traffic that creates a lot of pollution. The trains operate on diesel as well as the big rigs. Ag creates considerable particulate and sometimes chemical pollution, but I'm not suggesting we do away with ag. That'd be crazy. Imported oil is not only a concern about what their environmental standards are and what their operating practices are, it is extremely expensive without adding to our revenues for our county to do what it needs to do for our infrastructure. Therefore, I ask you to please certify the EIR, I'm going to abbreviate it, and approve the revised ordinance as it has been presented. I also ask that you direct Ms. Oviat and her staff to continue to work with small oil and gas producers who are battling for survival. They are finding the new ordinance very difficult or impossible to comply with.
Thank you.
I, I have one more to say.
Your minute over, ma'am, you got to wrap it up.
Oh, am I? I thought you said, I, I apologize.
It's okay.
Orphan wells are created when small oil and gas producers go bankrupt. So, we have a lot of impetus to work with them. And I thank Ms. Oviat, her staff, and all of you on the Board for your support and your time.
Thank you so much, thank you. Looks like we have one, another speaker. Hello, good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you, I'm Brad Peters, for transparency sake, Phillips my son.
You did, you did a good job, sir.
His mother did.
And you're honest, I, I like you.
That's what I'm about to say right now, honesty. Two things, number one, how can you call yourself an environmentalist when you go to Ecuador, which is the number one place where you import oil from? Cut down the rainforest, put it on a tanker, burn bunker fuel, and take it about 20 miles out and then switch over to diesel so it looks clean? Sell gasoline here out of oil from the Amazon? I've been touting this for a couple of years, but nobody listened. And number two, how do the environmentalists think that expensive gasoline and diesel helps poor people? And I guarantee you, you ask any poor person if they want to pay $2 or $8, and we all know what the answer is. So, thank you.
Thank you for all your contributions to Kern County, and congratulations on your new grandbaby. We see pictures and video all the time. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing portion of today, that was lengthy, but it was so informative, so illustrative, just really helpful, that we concede there are members of this community have strong passions and concerns about what the impacts are of this 100-plus-year industry. You see, of course, the families, businesses, and all of the residual impacts in Kern County, and folks really desperate to get back online and do what Kern County does like no one else. The complex matters, everybody's opinion is important and is, is informing this process, I promise you, and you're going to see that as we respond to some of those concerns in a moment. I'm going to ask staff if they could give us some input based on some of the things we heard today, and then we're going to come to the Board for comments, question, and action. And again, thank you for your, for your patience, thank you for your passion for being here and your love for Kern County. Director Oviat.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, in no particular order, but I'll start with orphan wells. You heard our first commenter indicate there were fourth, over 4,000 orphan wells in Kern County. That is actually the count for the top five counties, Kern, Los Angeles, Ventura, Fresno, and Santa Barbara, and the most orphan wells are in Los Angeles County. Kern County has 136 orphan wells that right now Calgem is cleaning. Kern County has 136 orphan wells that, right now, Calgem is cleaning up, which leaves us with 954 orphan wells. Once again, we have over 70,000 wells, either idle or active. And not only 950, I say only, but 954 of them are orphaned. Orphan wells are wells that have no operator. They were either deserted, or there was bankruptcy and the company went out of existence. So I just wanted to clarify that because that was a pretty dramatic number, 4,000 wells.
Thank you.
954. Second, I would like to comment on air quality. So you heard comments about that this is going to worsen air quality, and you also heard comments about where the money goes. So mitigation measure 4.3-8 is our air quality mitigation, where we require a payment based on how deep you drill, and there is a chart for your impacts. And that is then through a developer mitigation agreement collected by the county. It is then transmitted to the San Joaquin Valley Air District, and this is part of their indirect source rule voluntary emission reduction program. And what they do is that money is given out as grants to take a already a physical project. It is not given for grants to community organizations. No environmental justice organization has ever gotten that money. No environmental group has ever gotten that money. That money has to go for a physical project. If you want to take a diesel school bus and get a cleaner school bus, you can use that money. The city of Arvin did get a grant to change over their older diesel trucks to cleaner trucks. So the idea behind this is there's no net increase. Yes, there are impacts from the new drilling and the operations. When we calculated it, we included all of the impacts. The employee truck trips, the auxiliary reworks. We didn't just focus on the one issue. So there's a factor in there for everything. We understand that this is an expensive thing, but it has produced $153 million over the course of this. We have cleaned up agricultural engines, gone from diesel to electric. We have cleaned up school buses. Different organizations have bought clean transit vans. This is our way of equivalency. It is the equivalent of no net increase, even though we were permitting thousands of new wells. I wanted to comment on... There was a comment that, you know, there are wells that are leaking methane and that we're not taking them into account. That is not accurate. We have included in the whole of the record every deficiency of every kind. So we have an entire conversation about methane in Chapter 4.3, Air Quality, Chapter 4.7, Greenhouse Gases, and Chapter 4.8, Hazards, along with the fact that the San Joaquin Air District is working on regulations for these methanes. Once again, this is a very big industry. It should not be expected that local government is going to regulate everything. We work in concert with other regulations rather than be redundant. So there are methane regulations being developed by the San Joaquin Air District. And our wells are newer wells. They are of the highest standard, as opposed to a well that was drilled in 1986 that's still operating, which, under our ordinance, had no requirements. So I just wanted to put it in perspective and say that that's the reason we have 72 binders, the extent of the record that we've put in. Not to get too folksy, but those EIRs include the good, the bad, and the ugly in regards to everything we know, and everything has been provided to us from all sources on both sides about the impacts. There was some conversation about the 3,200. There was an offer to provide you a link. I'd like to note that in Volume 2, Appendix D, is an overview of Senate Bill 1137 and Public Health Rulemaking Scientific Advisory Panel Report in those binders. It includes every single report, every single transcript, and every single evaluation that was done. And we have looked at all of that information to come up with our recommendation to your board. One more. I wanted to touch on the Small Producers Program. Since the beginning of this project, the industry as a whole had conversations in 2012 to 2015 about small producers. A small producer is someone who does 10 permits a year. So they are a classification in the ordinance. They have a reduction in their county fees. They have a reduction in mitigation fees, a complete waiver for two of the fees. And there are fees that cannot be waived. In other words, they have to pay the air district fee for drilling for new well, and they have to pay this new water supply on a new well. They do not, however, pay because the industry, it was for the first 100 permits. The rest of the industry absorbs it in acknowledgement that they are larger than these small producers. That was an agreement that was instituted in 2015. They do not pay the Rural Crimes Unit fee of $475, and they do not pay the $1,500 for roads. Accommodations have been made for the small producers. Now, we are now going to restart permitting after this ordinance. Paul Johnson, the new Assistant Director, is going to be overseeing oil and gas. We have a fully online Acela program, and we have done a permit streamlining review in preparation for that. We will be creating a more streamlined checklist-style permit for reworks and sidetracks just to make this even more accessible for small producers. And we will absolutely work to make sure that they have access and direction. I wanted to lastly comment. You heard comments that this is not a site-specific EIR. The court ruled that it was. So to be very clear, for those of you who aren't clear about what we've been through with the nine years of litigation, this is a project-level, site-specific, SEQA analysis. We were sued by an oil company, and we won in the court who said that, given the way that it's designed and given the amount of analysis we've done, which is why it took all of this, this is a site-specific project level. And the question comes, well, why not just do it the way you do everything else? That's why Calgem has not issued any more permits. Because if every single company did a site-specific exemption, every single one of them would be sued. And I would like to note that Calgem, right now, is facing 10 lawsuits. Three of them over exemptions for abandonment. Two of them over mitigated NEGDEX, and the rest are over a variety of things in regards to their site-specific. That is what started this entire process. Beginning in 2012, the number of lawsuits against Calgem stalled permitting. And both the state of California, independently from the industry, both independently, not talking to each other, came to this department and said, is there anything you can do? You have streamlined solar and wind EIRs. Is there anything we can do? And we brought it to your board. And the industry publicly asked your board. The industry said, we want to be regulated. I just say that because there may be left in the room a sense that this was my idea and somehow I made this all up. Okay? Until the industry came in a public hearing and asked the board, do you want to do this? I declined to do it. So here we are. And is this innovative? Yes. But we are proud to say that the same kind of ministerial permitting is done by Tahoe Ranch on the Tahoe Commerce Center, and we have gotten millions of square feet of warehousing out of that. So I just want to tell you, this is not as unique as it looks. It's only unique to Kern County and our ability to figure it out. I'm available for any questions. I appreciate everyone's comments because that is how SEQA works. At the end of the day, we have taken all those comments and we've brought you the most legally sufficient answers that we could develop. Thank you.
That one, I will not stop. Okay. Should we have any more staff response? Got it. Thank you. Supervisor Peters, you're up.
Thank you. I just want to start by saying thank you to Director Oviya and Planning and Natural Resources for all of the hard work and effort you guys have put into this. I'm not going to go into too much depth. We talk pretty often, but I think it's important for the public to know just the unbelievable amount of effort that's gone into this. I just wanted to share a little bit kind of about my view on this. And that's during the Dust Bowl, back in 1932, my great-grandfather moved from Oklahoma to Bakersfield because of the opportunity. He moved here to work in the oil and gas industry because of the opportunities that were created here. My grandparents both grew up very poor, you know, picking vegetables. And my grandma lived in a house that they built every night out of the crates that they picked vegetables with. And because of the opportunity here, she became the first person in our family to get a college degree, ended up working for the county as a social service worker for a period of time. My dad, that you guys heard from just a little bit ago, he painted farm equipment when he was young. He got into oil and gas, started a company, and grew to be very successful because of the opportunity that oil and gas created. You know, we've heard from people about some of the health concerns that they have, but I've been around oil and gas my entire life. Before I was even old enough to go to school, my dad would go in the middle of the night, get called out to go deliver equipment. I would ride on the front seat of his truck and talk his ear off the whole way out to the rig. And I worked at his shop on oilfield equipment my entire childhood. My first job out of high school was as a welder-selper working on pipelines in oil fields. I've sold drilling equipment, downhole tools. I've designed and installed production wells all over the country. So I've worked in all the different aspects of oil and gas. And I mean, it may not have helped my looks at all, but it certainly hasn't stunted my growth. I can tell you. So I hear people's concerns, but I'm telling you that I don't share them. It's not been my experience. This is where my family lives, too. And I don't think that we just have an opportunity to approve this project. But I think we have a responsibility to. Oil and gas and the opportunities that it creates for our community is really a blessing that not everybody has. And I think we can't look that gift horse in the mouth. I think we have to support that industry that's provided so much opportunity for us over the years. And, you know, we've always been a leader in the oil and gas industry around the world. We do it better. We do it cleaner. We do it safer. And so I really do have a responsibility to drill baby drill and get this approved. So I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Is your baby a drill baby?
Amen.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Peters. Thank you for that beautiful history. Wow, I didn't know most of that about you. How incredible. Thank you. Supervisor Palier.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. So the regulatory box that we've been placed in isn't our fault. And the S-S-R-E-I-R is the pathway to help get us out of the maze that we have been trapped in for literally decades or close to it. So I represent probably arguably the largest part of our oil industry. And the state's transition plan for, especially on the west end of my area, has been not jobs, but really poverty. You take areas that had thriving downtowns or thriving Main Street, and those are now shuttered. This helps us, bring us into a renaissance, hopefully, of reviving those communities. Now, I recently did a tour of the Fields of Homes Western, and I learned a lot out there. I learned about the pipeline, the oil going north and south. And Kern County is the hub of that pipeline. And Lorelei, if you could elaborate just a little bit, we're not talking about a garden hose that you can just, you know, shut off and turn back on and the water flows. There's a lot that goes into it. And if that was shut down, not only the loss of potentially those refineries, but if we had a national crisis or a state crisis and that pipeline was down, that's not a quick process to get that started up again, is it? To the best of your ability to answer that.
Supervisor Palier through the chair. Our understanding is that there is a critical threshold of crude oil that has to go into those pipelines. That pipeline provides for refineries here as well as Valero in Wilmington and other places in Southern California that are designed to use our particular kind of crude. And once it goes under the critical and it's closed, it can't just be restarted. It will take a while for the flow to resume, and you have to have permits and you have to have oil.
And if that happens, I mean, oil, again, with the world, you know, problems that are happening with various wars around the world, if that was shut down, the availability to get oil, I mean, that would really land the gas prices potentially going to $8 to $9 overnight.
The information that I've been provided is that if we lose one more refinery, right? We're losing two? If we lose one more, we only have 15 days of gasoline in California. 15 days of gasoline. You know, I remember the '70s. There's other people in this room who do. We would actually perhaps have to go to every other day gas rationing where your license plates, if you're an odd or an even. Those are the kinds of things that Sacramento is very, very concerned about right now. And then we have the situation in the Middle East. So in-state production is critical. While we've had representations that this is a, you know, concerted effort by Sacramento to purposely not give out permits, I can't comment on that. You are better equipped to comment on that. What I will be clear about is SEQA is very, very hard. And litigation is very, very easy. I do need to clarify.
Yes.
Did you have other?
No, go ahead, please.
I wanted to clarify one of my comments now that we're talking about litigation. When I said that we could start permitting again, unfortunately, the writ, and we have counsel here who can say more if you're interested, essentially says that until we go back to court and they look at our document and say that we did it right this time and they discharge it, I cannot stop permitting again. So that was a metaphorical rhetorical when I start permitting again. So I want to be clear that I cannot start permitting. It takes 30 days for the ordinance to take effect, and I believe that date is July 28. It would take effect, I still cannot start permitting until we go back to the court and the court discharges the writ.
Thank you, Lorelei. So the environment. Look, I like the environment like everybody else. But I also like my constituents to be able to afford rent, food, gas in their car, education, healthcare, and supporting our oil industry helps do that. It was mentioned that over $100 million has been given to our various institutions, from parks, the hospitals, the schools, in support of that. And that has been through direct donations and downments, taxes. Those things are historic for Kern County and the cornerstone of really what Kern County provides to our citizens and our availability to get things done. Now, I came out to California when I was 18, and the Air Force sent me out here. But when I was in high school in Illinois, I read the books of the Grapes of Wrath that talked about Phillips' family. And it really talked about my wife's family, too, that came out here from Oklahoma, who were dirt poor for a better life. And now we have those people that have provided for their families throughout generations. Some have become millionaires. And now we have migrants and minorities and African-American community that are in those jobs, too. And some of them have become millionaires also. jobs, too, and some of them have become millionaires also. So Kern County is not the beach. It's not the tundra. It's not the forest. Our geography and topography lends for one thing, and that's drilling oil. That's what we're made for, and I second this motion.
Thank you Supervisor Palier. Supervisor Flores.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for steering us through this long and weighty meeting. Thank you, Planning Director Oviat and staff and everyone who has contributed to this day. Thank you, the public for showing up. We saw a lot of industries today. We saw builders. We saw healthcare. We saw oil workers. We saw unions. We saw environmentalists. We saw education, all facets of Kern County coming out today. So thank you. You know, 10 years in the making is quite extraordinary. These 70-plus binders, equally extraordinary. And I don't believe it's a testament to a weak ordinance. I think that that's a testament to a strong ordinance, to the future of independence in Kern oil. And that's why it's a threat. It's a threat to those that don't like local oil, that don't like national oil, that don't like energy independence. That's why it's been vehemently attacked for 10 years. That's why Kern County has been sued. So I look at that as the front line, and I look at that, Janelle Kapper from the city, from Bakersfield Chamber, mentioned trajectories. This represents a trajectory of independence. This represents so much potential for Kern County, and for too long, we have been under a leash, a leash. We've unable to do permits. We've unable to drill, a whole host of things. We've just been holding on. This represents cutting that leash, and this represents the promise of Kern County oil, the promise of California oil, energy, and U.S. national security. So much going on in the Middle East, as was said before, with the latest happenings in the Strait of Hormuz, with Iran. All of that's in play right now. There's a lot of uncertainty. China buys Iranian oil. When those facilities are attacked, China's going to go after other supplies. Those other supplies that we import are Saudi Arabia, Iraq, you name it. So those could be in jeopardy. And that's also a testament that the demand is still here because we import close to 70% of that oil. And who are we going to choose? Are we going to choose Taft or Iraq? Are we going to choose McKittrick or the Amazon? Are we going to choose the Kern River Field here in Oildale? Or are we going to choose some rogue nation-state that imports it by dirty tanker and bunker fuel, that was said by Mr. Peters, which is worse than the environment? I choose local oil. I've seen the benefit. I've seen the philanthropy. I drove today on a nice opening of Chevy cottages, veterans housing in Oildale. As I go over the bridge, similar to Taft, you see closed businesses. You see businesses that are no longer in operation. You see Rite Aid closing. You see Wendy's closing. That's all linked to the actions of strangling our economy. And so I want to see a robust economy in downtown Main Street. And I was going to Chevy cottages. There was, that's veterans housing, 12 units. And the reason why it's important, because our county paid $700,000 to that public-private partnership in conjunction with CAP-K and Veterans Assistance Foundation. So those dollars come from oil. Those dollars come from our economy and our revenues. Tonight, I'm going to have a town hall in Old Stockdale, and inevitably, what will come up is law enforcement. Inevitably, what will come up is roads, public safety, homelessness. All of that is traced back to our general fund, to our revenues. Those revenues come from assessed valuations. Those assessed valuations have been in decline, once from 33% down to 11%. We need to stop that trend. We need to correct that trend. And I believe what's before us is a correctable trend. We can correct that today, back to trajectories. Last week, we had a preliminary budget discussion in the county. We talked about future deficits, not this fiscal year, this fiscal year's sound, but prospective years moving forward. $9 million will be worse if the state has worse financial difficulties. The way to correct that, we had a big treatment on economic development. Our county spent $700,000 on our economic development function. We have economic development right beneath the earth, right here before us. We wouldn't even spend $700,000. If you unleashed the promise of potential of Kern County oil, we would never have a deficit. We would have outstanding positive revenues, the way Michael Turnipseed noted in what the fiscal implications here to the county. And as a reminder, according to the L.A. Economic Development Study, in California, oil represents $338 billion to the economy. We're the fourth-largest economy. Just think if we could unleash that, that potential, we could be number three or number two. This sets us up for that. In Kern County, it's $20 billion of economic input. These are our families. These are our children. These are our relatives. These are our businesses, our car dealers, our restaurants. It's all interconnected. And I'm very offended by those that have attacked Kern County, by those who have attacked our way of life, those who have attacked our economy. If you look at our 800-page staff report, that's the EIR, but the 800-page staff report, you'll see a whole host of logos. Logos that, for the most part, the majority are not from Kern County, that have attacked this EIR, that have attacked our county, that have attacked our way of life. People fundamentally have the right to work. It's morally offensive to say that your jobs don't matter. Your jobs matter. Your jobs pay the bills. Your jobs pay the mortgage, put food on your table. And so I would be, I'm honored to support this ordinance moving forward. And lastly, I just want to thank everyone for weighing in, and we don't need a just transition. We need to sustain this and move it forward, and there'll be no need for any transition. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Flores. Supervisor Couch.
Thank you. I'll try to go quickly. Chairman, you said at the very beginning of this that you and I were here when this started in 2015, and we thought it was going to work.
Yeah, we did.
And the reason we thought that, it was a logical thing to think, that it would provide the SEQA coverage, the environmental coverage, that would allow oil companies to move forward. The problem is, we don't live in a logical place. Senator Grove is fond of saying that the only thing wrong with Kern County is it's surrounded by the rest of California. That's kind of what I think the problem has been for a long time. I want to comment specifically about a couple of things that I heard. First, I want to state something. I didn't hear one piece of evidence from anyone that opposed this action that would give me pause at all on anything that the oil industry does about this ordinance, about this environmental impact report. So I'm obviously completely supportive of it. But I think it was important, it's important to say, I didn't hear, and I don't think there was anything that was said, that would challenge any of the work that you have done. By the way, thank you for your work, and I also want to thank Jennifer Hernandez, who sits right over here, who's been through this with us since the start. And I also want to thank the oil industry who footed the bill for this thing. You guys hung in there like grim death, and I appreciate it. I want to talk a little bit about 1137, Senate Bill 1137, which we are silent on, basically, in our ordinance, correct? I think that is beginning to be chipped away at because I think it is probably unconstitutional. I think it is probably a taking. I think Senate Bill 1137, which is the 3,200-foot setback in general terms, is going to crash smack into logic and science and the rights of people to produce the minerals that they own. And so you may or may not want to answer this question, and if you don't, that's okay. We could have another conversation. But what happens, what would happen if that law were rescinded or if it were challenged in court and it needed to go away? We would then be able to issue permits within the 3,200-foot setback, which would no longer really exist, right?
Supervisor Couch through Chair. Unfortunately, no. We would have to reopen the EIR to establish a setback because the setback we had was found invalid by the court for the multi-well health risk assessment. So this EIR does not have a locally established setback except for state law. So we would have to reopen it. However, the court challenge that is going on will take, lawyers can decide, but it should take four or five years to make it through the court. So the answer was, do we bring something forward to you so that once we're dismissed by the court, we could start permitting again, or do we wait for that? Clearly, the other reason that we are not permitting inside the 3,200 feet and not interested in permitting is the risk liability to the county of takings claims.
Which is, I think, the biggest problem that they're going to run into.
So we are, you know, so the two problems are, are we going to take on liability within the 3,200 feet for permitting? And second, once again, there's a whole bunch.
I understand.
There's a whole layer of regulation that has not been implemented on active wells. There are over 6,000 active wells within Kern County in the 3,200 feet. And Calgem inside SB 1137 is required to do all these things to them. They haven't implemented it. I believe it was deferred for a few years. It's complicated. And at the end of the day, we're interested in getting back to permitting wells in the oil fields and other areas which are not going to be affected by that.
I can't decide if I want us to get in the middle of that or if I want us to avoid that, but...
Thank you.
I can state unequivocally that some of the nicest real estate, some of the nicest neighborhoods in Kern County, and they exist in Bakersfield, have oil wells and production tanks in the middle of the park, the neighborhood park in the middle of the neighborhood, or within a chip shot from someone's million-dollar home. So that law has weaknesses that I think are going to be exposed over time. So those are my comments, Chairman, or Chair, and I appreciate it. I'm obviously in support.
Okay. Very good. Well, we are at the end of both our public input, staff presentation, and you've heard from our colleagues. I do believe that the issues have been thoroughly, thoroughly addressed, laid out. Not everything totally resolved today. That's not possible when you're dealing with human beings. And I would like to say, I really appreciate all of the young folks, the activists, who were here this morning and who very passionately are fighting for the things that they believe in. They actually remind me very much of myself 20 years ago, and every time I see them, Jennifer Hernandez, my heart gets a little bit, just a little soft when I think, wow, you know, what incredible energy, life force, and care there is on so many levels of this community. And I know we don't see eye necessarily, but I really think that's remarkable and beautiful. And I was stricken by Ms. Lori Pisanti's statements of a desire to be part of a conversation on a bigger level. I think that is so meaningful. And for those of you here that have the expertise, that have the knowledge, I encourage you to reach out to people who were just like me 20 years ago. I often joke with Mr. Turnipseed. When we first met, we hated each other. You know, I had so many ideas about him that have been proven completely wrong and outrageous. And I'll let him speak for himself about his ideas about me, but I'll tell you, we work very well together. And part of what has informed me to be at this place and this time and to feel so strongly about how I do about this EIR has everything to do with that mentorship, that input, that guidance. And so I want to encourage those conversations. I think they're meaningful. I think the passion is beautiful, and I think we can all learn together from it in the process. I really appreciate a young man from Taft earlier who said that this industry has given him dignity and life and a future. Dignity, stability, and a future. I think that's striking. I spent a couple of years in law school in Northwest Indiana, in Gary, Indiana, in their Indiana Legal Services, helping middle-aged black men file for bankruptcy in Gary because their steel mill industry, it just went belly up and it left without any kind of transition, frankly. And that community, which was thriving, incredible, is now one of the most violent cities in America. And I spent time listening to these men, usually staring at the floor from sheer humiliation, from having made $50 an hour to $20, they went overnight to $12 an hour, at the destruction of their industry, at the destruction of their community. That actually happened. I lived there. I spent time there, and I saw it with my own eyes. And I'll tell you, it was profoundly contrasted, that experience, what I saw and what I felt there, profoundly contrasted by my own return to Kern County immediately following law school, when my husband and I reconnected in my last semester, him returning from service, post-9/11 service in the Middle East and having no real sense of what would be next after such service. He did know one thing. If I can get to Kern County, if we can get to Kern County, there will be work in the patch. If I can get to the patch, there will be work. And what we knew, what he knew fundamentally and what I came to learn was that as a returning serviceman, he would be given priority in Kern County and be put to the top of the pay list, and that's exactly what happened. And that afforded us the opportunity to send me to Santa Barbara, where I prepared for the bar, came back, passed it first shot, and have been here in Kern County, you know, thriving and serving this beautiful community. The oil industry supported me, supported my ability to receive, you know, pass my bar and to be here as a family and be integrated here in Kern County. So I'll say, you know, not everything can be measured with charts and graphs. Who we are as Americans, how we treat each other, how we dream together, you know, has everything to do with why this industry is so beloved and so supported here. Not because it's perfect. It's not. There's no such thing. This partnership is part of perfecting the process and being honest and open and civil in here, as tense as it may be. This is really a beautiful display of who Kern County is. We're not the enemy to the state of California. We're the experts. I think they're learning that, and I'm very proud of that and very proud to represent you as your chair. We have a motion and a second. I want to thank you all for your contributions. Director Oviat, my God, Jennifer Hernandez, I just, you know, we have been at this now for a decade. Your expertise and sheer brilliance is beyond my capacity to convey to you today, but it is very humbling and I am very grateful. With that said, we have a motion and a second. I want to ask my colleagues to please take your vote on the EIR, the 10-year EIR process that has evolved to this moment with this incredible time in history, an unprecedented moment. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Now you can clap.
Motion adjourned.
Yeah. Oh, I love that. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here, Kern County. This is progress. This is good. This is for all of us. Thank you. God bless you. God bless Kern County. We're adjourned.